Good morning, welcome to the meeting of Tuesday, June 24th. Before we get started this morning, I wanted to say that today Supervisor Madron is participating remotely under AB 2449 rules. He has just cause an illness and this is his first remote appearance for the year. Please Supervisor Madron leave your camera on at all times and we will do roll call votes. Supervisor Madron, can you confirm that there is no person under 18 in the room with you at this time? Say that again, we couldn't hear you.
I confirm, there's nobody in the room under 18.
Okay, thank you, and happy birthday today. And I'm sorry you're under the weather. Okay, we will start with roll call.
Supervisor Arroyo, here. Supervisor Wilson.
Present.
Supervisor Bone.
I am here.
Supervisor Madron.
Present.
Chair Bushnell.
Good morning again.
All are here.
Okay, we'll salute our flag, please. CAO Hayes.
Good morning. Chair Bushnell, there are no modifications to the agenda today.
Okay, we will go into our consent calendar. Does any member of the board wish to say anything on consent? Okay, I think we have a couple retirements coming to us.
Chair Bushnell, Madron would like to say something.
Oh, go ahead Supervisor Madron.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Lisa Sundberg for her service on the Human Rights Commission. Thank you Lisa.
Okay, and then I think we'll go to Supervisor Bone.
Bruce, I missed you in the basement.
I didn't miss you.
You're quiet, you're quiet as hell. Whereas on January 6th, 2014, Bruce Hollingsworth was hired as a property tech 1 by the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office. And whereas on January 18th, 2025, Bruce Hollingsworth was promoted to the rank of property technician 2. Whereas property technician Bruce Hollingsworth played a vital role in supporting the operations of Humboldt County Sheriff's Office by receiving, storing, and maintaining an accurate inventory of property and evidence. And whereas the position required detailed record keeping and thorough understanding of regulations and legal requirements related to the storage and handling and disposition of property and evidence. Whereas property technician Bruce Hollingsworth ensured that all evidence and property received, categorized, and stored in accordance with proper chain of custody procedures and legal standards. Whereas property technician Bruce Hollingsworth was instrumental with switching the sheriff's office from paper to digital evidence tracking through the file on Q system, then to RIMS, evidence tracking software. Whereas the role includes conducting research and training on evidence handling procedures, advising staff on best practices, and contributing to special projects and policy updates related to property and evidence management. And whereas property technician Bruce Hollingsworth always approached his over 11-year career at the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office with a passion, enthusiasm, honor, unique sense of humor, compassion for the community, he served, and loyal to those he served with. And whereas the dedication, professionalism, and integrity demonstrated by property technician Bruce Hollingsworth upheld the mission and values of the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office. Now therefore it be resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors, Sheriff, Supervisor Sheriff William Hansel, and the staff of the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office hereby commends and thanks property technician Bruce Hollingsworth for his dedicated years of selfless service to the citizens of Humboldt County and the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office. We wish him safe travels, safe driving, and all the best in his retirement.
Let's take a picture real fast.
I know, yeah. You can hold out that.
Thanks Rex. Appreciate it.
I have to say a couple things, Rex. Okay, sorry. Well, let me say something first. I know Bruce is behind the scenes, but let me tell you Supervisor Bone kind of skipped over something, but Bruce Hollingsworth took us to paper, from paper, a file system, to digital, and he had to do that twice because we went to a file on Q system, which is a barcodeing system and those kind of things. Then when we switched to RIMS, we switched over to a whole new system. Boy, he was cursing us when we went to that new system because he just got completed with one system. Yes. Yeah, I don't know, you mentioned that, but it's like it was such a huge deal for us to do this, this whole digital format. And so, and then he had to do it twice. And boy, that was not easy, was it Bruce?
Yeah, it took a couple of years.
Yeah, it took a couple of years to do it. But, but that's one thing as far as chain of custody and evidence goes that people just don't understand. It's like when we go into court, we have to prove that the item that we seized at a crime scene was the same exact item that we, that appears in court. And people like Bruce has to come up and testify to those, to those instances to make sure that that chain of custody was adhered to. Because if they can take away the evidence, damage the evidence somewhat, then we don't have the ability to prosecute someone. So it's really, really crucial. Again, these are the people behind the scenes that make the sheriff's office work so well. And Bruce did this tremendous job, as well as, as getting rid of, of old property. And, and so we also have seized lots of generators over the years and going through the court process, and then able to provide those generators to our community. And Bruce has been the one that helps facilitate that as well. So, a lot of stuff behind the scenes that people don't realize, but, but we're sad to see him go. But we're happy that he, you know, is, has made it to retirement age and he's going to flourish and, and we wish him all the best. So, thank you Bruce. I'd like you to say a few words here.
Well, I appreciate this and thank you. Only thing I did notice, I was reading this yesterday, there's one error, I did not get promoted this year. I got promoted many, many years ago. So, and then also, just wanted to acknowledge that before I went to the sheriff's office, I did work at the county at social services. I did have a vital role in helping to establish the caregiver registry for adult services. Very proud of that. Was able to help a lot of people there too. So, again, thank you.
Supervisor Arroyo.
Well, now we also get to all thank you personally. I just, I know that we haven't had the chance to work directly with one another very often. I've seen you in passing in the, in the building. But I just want to say how much I appreciate the detail-oriented work of doing the property evidence management. All of that work is so critically important to, you know, prosecuting cases and to being able to uphold the law. And I'm so grateful that we have folks who are keen to do that and do it really well. So thank you so much for all your years of service, and I love your retirement ready shirt. It's a, it's a great fit.
Supervisor Bone.
I thought it was kind of, when you mentioned your previous life, the caregiver gold services set up, all these nodding heads over here going, "Yeah, yeah, 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 he did that." Bruce, thanks a lot, run into you every day and the, who are you sitting with Bruce?
This is my wife Jessica.
Okay, to save your marriage, do you want to say thank you to her for putting up with all this and everything else? Cause you, cause I have noticed the one thing that people do is they fail to mention that and then there's a fight out in the courthouse. No, I'm just kidding. Anyway, thanks a lot, appreciate it. I know you must have been very well, you must do very good work because I think we swore in like six people to replace you yesterday. We had new evidence, people all over the place swerved in, so we're, we're having to fill a big void, so appreciate all you did.
Congratulations and thank you to your contribution to Humboldt County. It sounds like you started a long time ago with DHHS and then moved on to the Sheriff's Department. Does sound like they'll miss you a lot. Congratulations to your wife too, retirement, and you'll have him home more often, and enjoy your years to come. Supervisor Wilson.
I associate myself with all of those comments, thank you, really. I mean, that kind of dedication to civil service is meaningful at all levels, whether it's in the basement or at the top. So I really appreciate it.
Okay, I think our next proclamation is also coming from Supervisor Bone. I think it's a retirement, another retirement from the Sheriff's Department. Losing them pretty quick, Billy.
Gilbert. Yeah, you gotta come up here. Gilbert won't forget his family, I know that, no. Whereas Gilbert Resendez was hired as a full-time correctional officer 1 on September 8th, 1998 by Sheriff Dennis Lewis. And on September 19th, 1999, Gilbert was promoted to the rank of correctional officer 2. On October 19th, 2007, Gilbert was recognized by Sergeant Luna for his countless hours of overtime work to cover shifts during staffing shortages. That hasn't changed too much, has it? To this day, Gilbert continues to work two to three days per pay period of overtime to ensure shifts are properly staffed. On March 16th, 2013, Gilbert was recognized by Lieutenant Flint for his life-saving efforts during a suicide attempt. Whereas throughout Gilbert's distinguished career of over 26 years, he has received several commendations, exceptional evaluations for a steadfast approach to working in the challenging field of corrections. Whereas Gilbert has spent his entire career improving the morale of both his coworkers and those incarcerated by appearing at the jail every year on Easter as the Easter Bunny and on Christmas as Santa Claus, providing candy canes to every employee on duty and every incarcerated inmate. Whereas Gilbert has been a valued member of the sheriff's office with his hard-working attitude, support for his fellow officers, and his nearly unbeatable chess game. And whereas Gilbert has always approached his career in law enforcement with integrity, dedication, and most of all fostering trust and teamwork among his colleagues over the past 26-plus years. He has shown the sacrifice and unwavering support to those that he led. Now therefore it be resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors and the staff of the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office hereby commend and thank correctional deputy 2 Gilbert Resendez for his dedicated 26-plus years of selfless service to the citizens of Humboldt County and the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office. We wish him well in his retirement.
Supervisor Arroyo.
Well, I love that what we got to hear just here gave us a little peek at your personality. It sounds like you're a real joy to be around and brought some just fun and humanity to what is probably, I'm sure, incredibly difficult situation for people every day, day in, day out. So, thank you for that and hope that other people follow in those footsteps of, you know, adding playfulness where it's possible in addition to upholding, you know, the highest standards that I know that you all uphold. So, thank you and I hope you have a wonderful retirement.
I know that the job that you had, very, very difficult. There's nothing easy about it. There are people criticizing from all, from within and from without. And then there's some praise in there too, and I want to talk about that just for, just a little bit, which is, it's true, you're interfacing with a population of people who are not having their best day, week, month, and sometimes years. That is for sure. And there are folks that have been impacted by those folks as well. But that doesn't mean that the humanity of the situation is removed. And I just want to say like, you know, most of the people, and actually all the people I've ever met that have worked in the jail, try and, and I think in many cases succeed in expressing and projecting that humanity, both personally and programmatically too. Can there be improvements in this system that we have? 100%. I'm sure you could make a list. And, but it still requires people to, every day to try, to iterate, to do better, and I know that's what I've heard that you do. So I really appreciate that.
Dwayne, would you like to come up and say anything?
Sure, yeah. Thank you. So Gilbert's career outdates mine, so he was a mentor of mine when I first started. And the thing that he taught me, and it kind of echoes what Supervisor Wilson said, is the humanity of the job, right? Everybody that's incarcerated, they're someone's daughter, they're someone's son, right? They mean something, they have value. And he taught me that, to treat them that way. And, and I know that served me well in my entire career, to emulate myself like, like a guy like Gilbert that comes in every, I've never seen him have a bad day, and in this career, that's damn near impossible. So, the fact that he came into work every day with a smile, with a joke, with something to lift our spirits is a testament to the human being that he is, and I just appreciate you guys recognizing him here today.
Gilbert, any final words? Okay, well, congratulations again. Okay, so now we're going to go on to a proclamation for Crossroads 50th anniversary. Is anybody here for Crossroads? Hi.
Hi.
Welcome. So, whereas Crossroads was founded June 23rd, 1975 with a profound commitment to addressing the critical needs for addiction treatment and recovery services within Humboldt County. And whereas the 50th continuous years, Crossroads has served as a guiding example of hope, healing, and transformation for countless individuals, families, and loved ones impacted by substance use disorders with a current documented count of clients who have been served at more than 4,700. And whereas Crossroads programs have, has consistently demonstrated a compassionate and evidence-based approach to care, offering comprehensive and patient treatment with a strong commitment to extensive after service, after care services. And whereas Crossroads originally began in one building with 16 co-ed treatment beds, providing long-term residential service, and now has two facilities and 20 residential beds with many different agency names known as North Coast Substance Abuse Council, Inc. And whereas Crossroads leadership recently applied for and received funding under a very competitive grant process to transform an empty structure into a residential women's program with 12 beds, making it impossible, making it possible to transform the current Myrtle site, Myrtle site to men's treatment and provide Humboldt County with its first women-only safe, supportive, and therapeutic environmental conductive to long-term recovery. And whereas Crossroads staff has played an integral role in improving public participation of treatment facilities and those who need them by speaking up compassionately on behalf of those with substance use disorders, having graduates carry the message of home into the community, and being an active good neighbor to all their facilities. And whereas the work that Crossroads has done reduces the societal costs associated with addiction and fosters healthier, more resilient individuals and communities within Humboldt County. And whereas the unwavering commitment of Crossroads staff has not only saved lives, but empowered individuals to reclaim their dignity, rebuild relationships, and become productive members of society. And whereas the Board of Supervisors recognizes the enduring positive impact Crossroads 50 years of service and its invaluable contributions to well-being of our residents.
Thank you. Well, it's been busy for sure. I've been telling folks, I said, you know, usually your stay at rehab is supposed to be peaceful, quiet, and serene. I said, unfortunately Mercer Fraser has other plans for you. You mind an arm pose?
I don't mind.
Okay. Three, two, one. Sorry, just got a weird hurt. You can just blame us, it's okay.
One more, sorry.
We're a problem everywhere we go.
Three, two, and one.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sure I'm supposed to say something, right? Yeah. So, it is both an honor and a privilege to accept this proclamation for work that started 50 years ago. A lot of things have changed in Humboldt County in 50 years, but one thing that has remained a constant has been the need for services like ours. I honestly pray for a day and a world and a county that no longer needs our service. Maybe that future towards my time of retirement can be Crossroads bed and breakfast. But unfortunately, I don't see that future coming anytime soon. So we as Crossroads and my dedicated staff, Megan Waterman, promise to carry on the good work of Crossroads for the next 50 years or into perpetuity as long as we are needed here in our county.
Thank you. Thank you. Services like these are so needed everywhere, but especially the commitment to Humboldt County. I appreciate just as having, you know, I think addiction hits every family in some way. And so I just appreciate so much that there's opportunities for people and that the Crossroads is growing and succeeding and that the services are there and, and ready for people that want to seek them. So I appreciate that. Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you so much for the work that you do, and I wanted to particularly say I'm appreciative of the hard work that you put into the Harris facility. I live very close by, and I'm glad you'll be helping people in the neighborhood. It's necessary, and I know it was a bit difficult to thread that needle. And you did a lot of work to make sure that the community could live with the project and, and understand what it was going to be, and made some changes to, to make that happen, which was really responsive. And I just want to say how much I appreciate that. You know, I'm familiar with the work that you've done at other facilities, but, and I know that one was, was a little bit trickier. So thank you for the work to, to make it happen.
Okay, anybody else? Supervisor Bone?
Sad but true, I remember 50 years ago, I actually had people that I was, knew very well, went through the program, and it was, it was kind of cutting edge back then. But it's kind of amazing, if you look at the original Board of Directors, it was pretty amazing. There was a lot of mainstream people that were far thinking ahead of what we ever, you know, and they were going to fix the problem in about six or seven years or so. But anyway, appreciate it. I appreciate the area around, especially because I'm so used to it being on Myrtle and, and the houses on Myrtle and everything else. The neighbors don't complain too much, and you're, and you're, people at the crosswalks, I can tell you just at West, that screwy crosswalk and everything else are probably some of the politest people waving cars through and everything else. So they're aware of their surroundings and they're bringing themselves back into society in the property way. And I know that's because of Megan's staff and everybody else giving them those opportunities and showing them self-worth. And the biggest, the biggest thing is show them self-worth so they don't have to look for self-worth, and it'll go a long way. So, appreciate it you guys very much.
Absolutely. And if we were like 16 feet further down, we'd be able to qualify for our very own crosswalk. Well, thank you all for your service.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And we expect to see you at our ribbon cutting. Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I'll bring the consent calendar back to the board, or are there any other comments on the consent calendar? Supervisor Wilson.
Thanks to Crossroads, and then also thank you to a few folks, hold on, let me bring up my notes here. Oh, there it is. I want to thank, we have some reappointments to the Williams Mac Advisory Committee, both John Vivota and Martha Spencer, and so I want to thank you guys for keeping on, keeping on there. And then also Bruce Kahn and Paul Amato, thanks for staying on to the, to our, yeah, Fish and Wildlife, I guess it's Fish and Game Commission. Just a reminder to folks that we have a bunch of commissions that are always in, you know, need of folks, and even if you see it's full, but it has, you have some interest, just sign up, put in the application, and then when an opening comes up, staff will reach out to you and see if you're still interested. So, thanks.
Okay, Supervisor Bone.
And we go through a lot on the consent calendar, but if you look at this consent calendar, both with foster care and the care for severe mental health, just today, I think we're almost at 1% of our budget. And we're talking about these things, it's over $7 million, so, between those two. So we're talking a lot of money being spent on foster care, which needs to be done, and housing and caring for the severe mental health, which we hear about every day. So I appreciate all the work that DHHS does in overseeing all these contracts and, and making sure that we're getting our bang for the buck and, and spending a lot of those are federal monies. But that doesn't mean they're not our monies. We got, every, every month, we all get something taken out from the federal government to run these things. So, appreciate all that on there, but there is, we are covering a lot of the issues that face us every day. It's not like we don't face them, they're just not front and center. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Supervisor Madron.
Thank you Chair, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, I just wanted to really give a great shout out and thank you to DHHS and all of the partners out there for getting all of these contracts together and getting them signed before July 1st. I mean, that is an amazing effort that gets done, and I know it wasn't always that way, and I just wanted to recognize the incredible effort that's been made to be able to get all that stuff done timely. That's no easy task, so thank you all and congratulations on your effort. Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So at this time we'll go out to a public comment, and we'll go to Zoom first.
There is none, Chair Bushnell.
Okay, we'll go to a public comment in the room. Welcome Kent.
I did see something, maybe it's always been standard, but I think all those $7 million contracts, see these are contingent upon not losing state and federal funding. Good move. I also did wish to make comment on the budget, which is going through at this time. I think there's $425,000 that's put into economic development. It was a last-minute amount of money in there. I'm going to be interested to see where that goes. If I were to trust that to somebody to do economic development, I would have an ad hoc committee with Steve Madron involved in that because I think your economic development I live very close by, and I'm glad you'll be helping people in the neighborhood. It's necessary, and I know it was a bit difficult to thread that needle. And you did a lot of work to make sure that the community could live with the project and understand what it was going to be and made some changes to make that happen, which was really responsive. And I just want to say how much I appreciate that. You know, I'm familiar with the work that you've done at other facilities, but and I know that one was was a little bit trickier. So thank you for the work to make it happen.
Okay, anybody else? Supervisor Bone?
Sad but true. I remember 50 years ago, and I actually had people that I was knew very well, went through the program, and it was, it was kind of cutting-edge back then. But it's kind of amazing, if you look at the original Board of Directors, it was pretty amazing. There was a lot of mainstream people that were far thinking ahead of what we ever, you know, and they were going to fix the problem in about six or seven years or so. But anyway, appreciate it. I appreciate the area around, especially because I'm so used to it being on Myrtle and the houses on Myrtle and everything else. The neighbors don't complain too much. And you're, and you're, people at the crosswalks, I can tell you just at West, that screwy crosswalk and everything else are probably some of the politest people waving cars through and everything else. So they're aware of their surroundings, and they're bringing themselves back into society in the property way. And I know that's because of Megan's staff and everybody else giving them those opportunities and showing them self-worth. And the biggest, the biggest thing is show them self-worth so they don't have to look for self-worth, and it'll go a long way. So appreciate it, you guys, very much.
Absolutely. And if we were like 16 feet further down, we'd be able to qualify for our very own crosswalk.
We tried.
Well, thank you all for your service.
Thank you.
And we expect to see you at our ribbon-cutting.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I'll bring the consent calendar back to the board. Are there any other comments on the consent calendar? Supervisor Wilson.
Thanks to Crossroads. And then also, thank you to a few folks. Hold on, let me bring up my notes here. Oh, there they are. I want to thank, we have some reappointments to the Williams Mac Advisory Committee, both John Vivoda and Martha Spencer. And so I want to thank you guys for keeping on, keeping on there. And then also Bruce Kahn and Paul Amato, thanks for staying on to the, to our, yeah, Fish and Wildlife, I guess it's Fish and Game Commission. Just a reminder to folks that we have a bunch of commissions that are always in, you know, need of folks. And even if you see it's full, but it has, you have some interest, just sign up, put in the application, and then when an opening comes up, staff will reach out to you and see if you're still interested. So, thanks.
Okay, Supervisor Bone.
And we go through a lot on the consent calendar, but if you look at this consent calendar, both with foster care and the care for severe mental health, just today, I think we're almost at 1% of our budget. And we're talking about these things, it's over $7 million, so, between those two. So we're talking a lot of money being spent on foster care, which needs to be done, and housing and caring for the severe mental health, which we hear about every day. So I appreciate all the work that DHHS does in overseeing all these contracts and, and making sure that we're getting our bang for the buck and spending a lot of those, our federal monies. But that doesn't mean they're not our monies. We got every, every month, we all get something taken out from the federal government to run these things. So appreciate all that on there, but there is, we are covering a lot of the issues that face us every day. It's not like we don't face them, they're just not front and center. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, I just wanted to really give a great shout-out and thank you to DHHS and all of the partners out there for getting all of these contracts together and getting them signed before July 1st. I mean, that is an amazing effort that gets done, and I know it wasn't always that way. And I just wanted to recognize the incredible effort that's been made to be able to get all that stuff done timely. That's no easy task. So thank you all, and congratulations on your effort. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we'll go out to a public comment, and we'll go to Zoom first.
There is none, Chair Bushnell.
Okay, we'll go to a public comment in the room. Welcome, Kent.
I did see something, maybe it's always been standard, but I think all those $7 million contracts, see, these are contingent upon not losing state and federal funding. Good move. I also did wish to make comment on the budget, which is going through at this time. I think there's $425,000 that's put into economic development. It was a last-minute amount of money in there. I'm going to be interested to see where that goes. If I were to trust that to somebody to do economic development, I would have an ad hoc committee with Steve Madron involved in that, because I think your economic development will be related to housing, and I can give you a business model for that later. I did wish to say I did not see a lot of extra travel time in your budget. I think you're going to have spending a lot of time, probably around Christmas is my guess, going back to Washington DC, the snowy time of year, for congressional hearings and investigations. So you may wish to consider that as a future amendment in your budget. Unfortunately, Humboldt County has a lot of attraction out there for that, and you may need a lot of money for that, for your staff and everybody to go back to testify. When you engage in hundreds of millions of dollars of money laundering, which is a RICO crime as a county, it appears that you've, you've gotten the attention of people back in Washington DC. So a couple of different people I've reached out to. My crystal ball is based upon usually inside knowledge or self-fulfilling prophecies, but in this case, I think you're going to have a lot of litigation going on, I think you're going to need a lot of money in your budget for that, and you're probably going to get defunded and clawed back quite a bit. And I know Rex thinks it's all funny, but RICO Rex is going to be really good at testifying before these committees. Thank you, Robert, you can speak.
Thanks, Kent. Any other public comment from the room? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment and entertain a motion, please.
We'll move consent.
I'll second.
Okay, Kaylee.
Supervisor Bone.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson.
Yes.
Supervisor Madron.
I can't.
Thank you. Supervisor Royal.
Yes.
Chair Bushnell.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we will go on to public comment on non-agenda items, and we will start with Zoom first. Are there any Zoom callers for public comment?
No, there's not. Chair Bushnell.
Okay, we will go to public comment on non-agenda items in the room. Hi, good morning. How was the bus ride today?
Yeah, I just forgot the hat. Yeah, I rode the bus as usual. My name's Joanne McGary. I have three things I like to talk about. The first one is climate, and we had our summer solstice, and a lot of things online are saying, welcome to the coolest summer for the rest of your life. So again, we're have a climate action plan I hope to be manifested somehow in front of you soon. It's been a long time coming, and the climate's been changing, and we haven't been adapting as well. But that's an issue that's really important to me, lowering our greenhouse gas emissions. And I, just as a side, I took the bus to Lolita for the block party there on Saturday, and because of the bus schedule on Saturday, I had to leave at 9:24 from Arcata to get to Lolita, and I couldn't get back to Arcata until 5:29 on the bus, and it got me back at 6:30. So it was a nine-hour day, totally worth it. But as we talk about reducing our greenhouse gases, we need to adapt our public transportation to really kind of fill that gap for people. So the second thing I want to talk about is bicycles. I acquired an e-bike recently, and I'm looking forward to taking it on the Humboldt Bay Trail when it opens up on the 28th. But once I get to Eureka, what I'm really concerned about is parking safely my bike. And I just hope that we are taking into consideration destination parking and all when we design things for non-car travel. And I really do think bicycles deserve to be in parking slots with an adapted bike rack type thing as much as cars are in parking slots. And also, when we're considering housing, we need to have housing that has safe bike parking. I currently have to park my e-bike inside my living space, not acceptable for the future. So thinking about those things in addition to beautiful paths for things like our bikes. Finally, and the 47 seconds left, I wear this hoodie that has a watermelon on it, and I've been fasting for 24 hours and may continue for a while, but watermelon might be one of the first things I will eat. But I just need to acknowledge that I'm fasting for the people being starved in Gaza. And watermelon is a symbol of Palestinian solidarity for a lot of us, and so we, as a community, just really need to be conscious of what is happening elsewhere in the world and do what we can for humanity. We talked a lot about humanity with the corrections people. You know, we got to talk about a concentration camp that's been devastated in another part of the world.
Thank you. Welcome again, Kent.
I might start doing three topics, too. She does so good at that. I want to concur with you, really important to get yourself a bike parking. I mean, that's going to be important. I saw somebody actually riding the trail on a bike, probably illegally this morning, but, but I think that it's something that was brought up at Blue Lake City Council. Some guy said, well, you need a bike parking at City Hall, so I'll pay for it. So hopefully, the county will be proactive on that. I think it's really important. People can, can safely leave their bikes out without them being stolen and/or disappearing. So I could elaborate. A lot of people say, Kent, you know, you threaten litigation and you don't come through with it all the time, you know? Rarely do I have to. Like on the Karen Paz litigation that we were talking about, Karen decided she didn't want to move forward, she got her settlement. And what I found, a lot of time is if you give time and use such things as congressional hearings and investigations, the litigation can follow, because the administrative record is developed at that particular level. I think there's a congressman from Illinois who's kind of moving forward on some of these hearings, setting them up for the future. You're getting a lot of attention back in there. Part of the problem is, we have some of the biggest perception out there that we are one of the biggest criminal counties in the country. And like I mentioned before, money laundering, tax evasion, racketeering, some of the worst ACES scores in the whole country, and we pour money after thing, money after thing, but we don't seem to be moving forward in a productive manner. I don't see my timer up there, so, thank you. So I did want to make mention regarding jobs, what's going to happen. I've noticed all of a sudden, as we started bringing forward to Steve Madron and a few others, we need to get the high school kids trained out from the onset as far as entering high school and getting into a trade. One of the ways that we're looking at doing that is getting them to such trades as possibly a project that I may get engaged in with it, maybe not, which is a tiny home, major construction facility to build tiny homes. There we go, my timer's back on. And that would be, I think, a wonderful thing. These young adults can learn trades and not have to go through all this other process that's not going to benefit them. Of course, wish to work with, with Mr. Hunterlock there and the union. My understanding is, as soon as they graduate from high school, they can be ready to go into their programs. You're going to find that tax-wise, having done a little research, if we put them on wheels and send them out, then of course, they're taxable. If they're fixed, they're not, and we'd be looking at probably having as many as 300 or 500 of those particular OES-approved for California, any kind of a national disaster, not natural, California, we would have 500 or so of those ready to go out, top dollar, ready to satisfy, put people back where their homes were devastated by fire, they'd be set up specifically for those kind of purposes. So if we're looking at economic development, that's something that maybe we'll help spend the 425 on. Thank you, Robert, you can speak.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? So I'm coming there. So we're going to come back to the board, and Supervisor Royal has a public comment on non-agenda items.
Thank you. I wanted to briefly share the, some details about the Humboldt Bay Trail celebration that's this Saturday, the 28th. And it will be the grand opening for the Humboldt Bay Trail connection between Arcata and Eureka. The celebration at the Adorni Center in Eureka is going to be from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. And then throughout the day, there's going to be a fun run, a group skating the trail, a bike ride, a group bike ride. Of course, it's going to be open to the public, so people can use the trail in all non-motorized modes that they like. But there's also some organized events for people to, you know, have fun doing their preferred trail activity in a group. There's also going to be a bus running between the Adorni Center in Eureka and South Cheese Street in Arcata for people who, you know, have little kids and, you know, want to bike one way and take a bus back, or, you know, for whatever reason, want to take a bus one direction, or take a bus just from Arcata to Eureka directly to, or back, directly to the Adorni Center. So that schedule is all available online at transportationpriorities.org/trailparty. There'll be lots of organizations there being a part of this. There's trail cleanups also planned for the morning, so it's going to be a full day of activities in celebration of the new trail. This is a huge highlight for us as a community, and something that I know that I've worked on for many, many, many years, and wearing different hats over the years. So really excited that it's coming to fruition, and I want to take the opportunity to thank everyone on our team who has helped make this possible. We have a lot of folks who have given many, many years of effort to this, to this really important development. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'm closing public comment, and we will take a five-minute break and be back at 9:45. Thank you for the small break. We needed to break because we have a time set for 9:45, and this is coming to us from our CAO's office, and I'm going to have our CAO introduce it. Good morning, Peggy. Good morning, Ryan.
Thank you, Chair Bushnell. This is an exciting day for economic development staff to present to your board the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategies Report that we've been working on for what feels like many, many years, but I think it's probably about two years in the making at this point in time. And you have Peggy Murphy and Ryan Heights here to present this item to you today.
Good morning. Peggy Murphy, interim Program Manager for the Office of Economic Development. I'm going to start by just a little bit of background on the SEDs and the purpose of the document. The SEDs, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, which we will refer to as the SEDs, is a federally required plan for communities to seek economic development funding through the U.S. Economic Development Administration. It outlines a multi-year strategy to promote job creation, infrastructure investment, and economic resilience. The SEDs is designed to foster sustainable and inclusive growth, align regional resources, and ensure eligibility for key EDA programs such as Public Works and Economic Adjustment Assistance Grants. Additionally, this is a public document. This is intended for any entity within the county to point to the document when seeking out funding or developing programs. Now, a little background on how we got to where we are today. On February 27, 2024, your board directed economic development staff to release a request for proposals for qualified firms to assist in the development and completion of the SEDs. Three proposals were received. On December 10, 2024, a contract was awarded by your board to Thomas P. Miller &amp; Associates. Since that time, staff has been working with TPMA and local stakeholders to complete the SEDs, at which point I will be handing it off to Ryan Heights to discuss the required components and the development process of the SEDs.
Thank you. As per the SEDs requirements, there are four mandated components to the SEDs, the first being the Community Summary Background, which provides the overview of the regional economic conditions. The second is the SWOT Analysis, which focuses on all of the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats of the area, so that we can identify strategies to support those areas. The third is the Strategic Direction and Action Plan, which aligns with the SWOT and other regional plans, such as the local regional workforce plans. It includes goals, implementation steps, the responsible parties, timelines, potential funding sources. And finally, there is an evaluation framework that is intended to provide tracking mechanism and KPIs for the Strategic Direction and Action Plan. So following the selection of TPMA, there was a series of steps taken. The first step was our data collection and research. TPMA conducted extensive research and data analysis to inform all components of the SEDs. This was supported by information gathered at prior community road shows when we first started, this a couple of years ago. We had those throughout Humboldt County. We then had a series of workshops with industry-specific individuals from the target sectors, which I identified as education and training, healthcare, financial services, agriculture, arts, hospitality and tourism, construction, renewable energy, and then finally, aquaculture and fisheries. So we had about 90 participants from these, and we helped go through a series of questions and identified some key challenges, priorities, and opportunities for the community. A communities-wide survey went out with about 100, 800 responses, excuse me. This was used to inform the stakeholder engagement portion, which started with a series of meetings with the same group of individuals who were invited from those industry-specific workshops to identify a basic framework for the strategic actions. It then went to the SEDs Strategy Committee, which is composed of public, private, nonprofit, and tribal individuals, who kind of massaged what was initially proposed in the strategic framework and refined it further. Once it went out to public comment on May 15th, June 15th, we had a series of, I think it was about 25, public comments came back in, which were dealt with by the SEDs Strategy Committee on the 16th, following the close of the public comment period. All of those comments were reviewed and are included in the document, and they were either accepted, declined, or considered. And if those were accepted, then there was some modification to the document throughout. And that is, so with that, I'm going to hand it over to our consultants at TPMA, Lindsay Blues and Brett Wyler.
Thank you, everyone. I just want to make sure everybody can see my screen and hear me okay.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you for having us today. I'm excited to present the Humboldt County SEDs to you all. This is a project that we've been working on for about the last six months. It's definitely one of the types of projects that I have a lot of experience with and have enjoyed throughout my economic development career. My name is Lindsay Blues. I'm a Senior Economic Development Consultant with TPMA, and I am joined by my boss Brett Wyler. We're going to go through, recap a little bit of what, you know, Ryan and Peggy had mentioned, but I want to kind of go through a little bit more about the focus areas of the SEDs and kind of what we are trying to accomplish with it. So I'll start out just by talking about our timeline, which they mentioned. Starting out, we launched in January. These sorts of projects typically are more like a 12-month process, which allows us a lot more time for engagement, allows us a lot more time for analysis. And so we're, even on this short timeline, I think we were able to get through quite a bit. So that research and planning, the survey that Ryan mentioned, and the analysis of that, some onsite sessions, which were wonderful, and it was great to meet everyone and to get on the ground in Humboldt County, the strategy development and the draft, and then, of course, working with the SEDs Committee, and then getting everything out to public comment. And then our hope is to get this submitted to the EDA here at the end of this month. So as Ryan mentioned, there are required pieces of the SEDs, so the economic resiliency piece, Strategic Action Plan, the Evaluation Framework, SWOT Analysis, and the Summary Background. So essentially, what we're looking at here is for the EDA, because it's a federal agency, we want to play to their priorities. So everything that we look at is through the framework of what are the EDA's priorities, what's going to set us up the best to be able to bring funding into the community? And then looking at everything through the lens of economic resiliency, how does this strategy make our community more resilient for the future and help just build that, that long-term sustainability? So we'll go through a little bit of the different focus areas that came out throughout our engagement and research and analysis. So the first is industry elevation and diversification, and so for this, we really wanted to focus on a couple of different things. So when we talk about economic development, we look at the legacy industries, those that have been in the community for a long time. And in this particular case, you guys have a wonderful set of legacy industries, looking within this strategy to develop more modernization, regenerative- within this strategy to develop more modernization, regenerative practices, really kind of leveraging that technology and some of the other things that maybe some collaboration could launch forward to streamline those legacy industries and help them for long-term sustainability. Also looking at emerging industries. So those industries that are really kind of coming about as we speak and those that I think Humboldt County has the opportunity to kind of seize opportunities with. The next is small businesses, really working on that small business and entrepreneurial development in and around Humboldt County. Tourism-related businesses tend to get in this category, be put in this category, but also a lot of other businesses that you might not think of. So we want to make sure that we had really good grounded strategies for small business development. We also wanted to make sure that we had a section in which we talked about the policies and incentives. So local preferences for procurement, that was something that was brought out quite, quite a bit. Evaluation of incentive programs, are these incentive programs actually working for us? What could we implement further? Streamlining maybe some of those permitting and policies to move forward and increasing our global competitiveness. The next is collaboration. So this is a huge piece of the puzzle and came out throughout everything we did, which I don't think is a big surprise, because as we talk about collaboration, it's easy to say and it's really hard to do. We always want to make sure that we're bringing the right people to the table and we're bringing a representative group to the table. There was a lot of recognition of shortfalls within that, but also a lot of opportunities for the future. So what we're looking at with the collaboration piece is kind of continuing that momentum of Redwood Region rise beyond that California Jobs First, looking at the structure of our organizations, the communication between the organizations within Humboldt County, and how we all work together to advance these strategies forward. The next is Humboldt County brand and marketing strategy. This is another thing that really kind of came out within all of the engagements that we did and something that the local community seems to have a lot of passion about. Within this kind of strategy, we're looking at different targets to attract businesses, to attract workers and residents, and then to attract tourists. So there's a lot of marketing and attraction happening just within this collaboration piece of the puzzle. So a lot, a lot of different moving parts and people at the table. The next is natural assets and disaster preparedness. So this is a big part of the SEDS and usually comes out in every SEDS that we, that we do for multiple reasons. So number one, the E D A. wants to make sure that we're prepared for natural disasters. So making sure that the plan aligns with the Hazard Mitigation Plan, with the Regional Climate Action Plan, other local disaster response plans that are happening, and also to push forward with disaster response plans for local businesses. We also want to balance this kind of potential increase in use of lands and development with the protection of those natural assets. So there's some, some balance that has to happen there. Mitigation of contaminants and brownfield analysis is definitely within that utilization of best practices for sustainability. A lot of that is really kind of playing out in some of the other plans that are happening around Humboldt County. So again, that alignment with other, other planning efforts. So we're not duplicating, we're just aligning to make sure that all the strategies are kind of together. And then supporting provisions and maintenance of natural assets and green spaces within the area. And that's another thing that came out pretty strongly. You have a great community with a lot of wonderful natural assets and that you all want to protect. And I believe that, you know, you're well positioned to do so. This will come as no surprise that fundamental community needs are within the realm of economic development, touch economic development in so many ways. So housing is a big piece of the puzzle, healthcare, workforce, and education. So these are kind of fundamental community needs. Every community is looking to improve on these particular pieces of the puzzle. With Humboldt County in particular, looking at the healthcare workforce. So there are already a lot of things happening within the community to try to push this forward, expanding telehealth, mobile health services, et cetera, perhaps healthcare hubs and more public awareness, et cetera, as well as just trying to grow the healthcare industry and especially attract workers in the healthcare industry to the area. That also feeds directly into the housing issues within Humboldt County. This is also not necessarily unique to Humboldt County, but you do have some, you know, particular challenges. Housing quality, availability, and affordability is really one of those major community needs that every, every community has. We are recommending a, you know, situational assessment, evaluation, feasibility for different potential incentives and initiatives for housing development and preservation. So we want to talk about both the development of new housing and preservation of existing, development of a range of housing options and supportive programs. And then also the industries that are adjacent to that housing piece of the community needs, the support for forestry and construction, target industries, and again, that kind of sustainable regenerative building materials opportunity. The next is workforce and education. Wow, you guys have so much going on already with workforce and education. And I've heard that conversation already brought up within this session. Kudos to you all for being focused on this particular piece of the puzzle. Things that were brought out within this strategy, training centers, apprenticeship programs, internships, dual enrollment, really kind of working on that entrepreneurship mindset among the students that are local. Looking at your K 16 pathways and your wonderful assets as far as post-secondary education goes within the area and being able to expand on that, make it more accessible for those in the area and mitigating some of those barriers to, you know, achieving some of those certifications and, and degrees as we move forward. Also just looking at best practices, right, for businesses, for, to take advantage of workforce development, different programs, incentives for worker retention was a really cool, you know, conversation to have with these stakeholders. And then of course, was just a childcare study done and looking at those childcare resources and wanting to again align with all of those current efforts happening. The next is infrastructure. Again, not a big surprise here that there are some challenges as far as infrastructure, infrastructure goes, especially as it relates to transportation and that connectivity and, you know, public transit, you know, leveraging the harbor assets that you have and some new technology. Electricity, the grid modernization that needs to be done within Humboldt County and the capacity that you have for, for, you know, your electricity and the opportunities for renewable energy, different innovations and efficiencies there. Broadband, just increasing that access and expanding into those rural areas. It's very encouraging to see a lot of the existing, you know, projects in place and just continuing on that path and leveraging what, what you have already in place and happening. Water and waste, again, modernization of a lot of this infrastructure is particularly important. Building capacity and also training. A lot of times when we think of infrastructure, we're just thinking about that, that, that kind of capital improvement of our infrastructure. We don't always think about training and retaining the operators of, you know, your water, wastewater, the integration of the systems, et cetera. We want to make sure that when we're expanding, that we're looking at that, that access and the costs associated with expanding your water and wastewater infrastructure. And just like utilization of some of the programs that are already out there and education about them to help with energy efficiency, et cetera. So the evaluation framework is really, we're talking about implementation, right? So implementing these strategies. So many of the partners that are brought to the table here are already working on these efforts. We're not trying to step on these efforts, we're trying to strengthen the efforts that are already happening and then grow those efforts in these collaborative initiatives. So we're looking at key performance indicators. How do we know if we've achieved the, the strategy that's in mind, what kind of timelines we think it will take to get some of these things done? It helps us prioritize our short, medium, and long-term goals. Within each one of these focus areas and strategies within the document, you'll see a list of partners, a list of resources, and then a list of catalysts. So partners that should be at the table when we're talking about some of these things within the strategies, resources that we have, and resources that we need, and then also catalysts, again, those things that are happening or are on the verge of happening or might happen that can help propel some of that momentum forward. Then we get to public comment. So with a public comment period, again, this is a 30-day period. This is required by the E D A., but I think it's a fantastic piece of the puzzle and should be done with almost any planning effort. And it's a piece that I take very seriously. So with the E D A., what they want us to do is to collect public comments over a 30-day period. They want us to help push out a little bit about, you know, just getting the word out that it's available for that. So some of the things that we did here, you know, pushing out that press release, getting with all of the stakeholders that had been involved, et cetera, and kind of pushing it out that way, asking them to share it within their networks, which can really get it to a lot of people very quickly. So we, you know, we did that. We even made a presentation during that time to try and get the word out a little bit more. So we received 27 responses that we recorded and it, each comment had maybe varying levels of detail within that. We're happy that about 14 of those were accepted and readily integrated into the document without, you know, really any pushback there from the SEDS Committee as the SEDS Committee was reviewing each one of those responses, or each one of those comments. Nine of them were either partially integrated or will need to be just discussed further for integration in the future. So with the SEDS, you have the opportunity to revise that, update it as you go, you know, on a yearly basis, et cetera, too. It should be a living plan, essentially. So if you don't get everything in on this round, you can update it and make sure that it is still a valid, you know, plan for moving forward. Four of them were declined. One of those, though, was just duplicative of an earlier comment. And then of course, with everyone, whether it was accepted, partially accepted in consideration for the future, or declined, every single comment has a response in the SEDS document from the SEDS Committee about the reasoning behind that decision. Additionally, there were some letters that were sent to us concerning some of those pieces that, and really I think that they, they followed pretty closely along with the general sentiments of the public comments. And so we wanted to make sure that we didn't just include the public comments and the SEDS Review Committee's responses, but also included those letters so that everyone, it's very transparent about what the concerns are. And we thought that all of those concerns were valid concerns. So I just want to make sure that that is brought, you know, to the table and, you know, made very clear. We aren't trying to hide anything. We wanted to make sure that we were directly addressing each one of those concerns as best as we could. So at this time, I will stop sharing Brett, Ryan, anything that I missed in this so far. Any questions for me?
Are there any questions from the board for Lindsay?
No.
Okay. Go back to Peggy, I think.
I think that concludes our presentation. At this point, we're just asking for board action to accept and approve it so that we can submit it to the U S E D A.
Okay. So are there any comments or questions from the board before we go to public comment? Nope. Okay. Public comment on the Zoom?
There is none, Chair.
Public comment in the room.
As far as full transparency, I did not read the 240 pages on this topic. I, I saw a little bit of, of comments on Lost Coast regarding the particular process. 240 pages at $143,000 comes out to approximately $595 per page. I did wish to make mention that we used to win, we won all kinds of rewards for having a road show and I always enjoyed going and going to those particular things. I guess we probably won't be doing that again. I don't know. If you win an award, maybe it's a reason to continue it, but we probably ran into COVID and a few other things. Might want to bring it back someday. I did wish, you know, to, to say I strongly support the fact that they are understanding the need for workforce education, which I spoke to earlier, and housing quality, which I spoke to earlier also. These are some of the things, in my opinion, are the future of Humboldt County as far as economic development. Otherwise, some little tiny company by the name of Blue Lake Enterprises with a, with general engineering contractors wouldn't have got a hold of John Ford and found out that tiny homes was run before some of the bigger people like Danco and some other big developers. They really weren't interested in it. Well, it's something we may be interested in. We're doing a feasibility study as we seek. Maybe partner up with George and Peggy Schmidbar will have us in one of their mill sites out there and work with these people to really put this together. I think it would be a wonderful thing. The economic development in these things is, a lot of it's going to take a lot of help from the county. Some of the biggest things we're going to need to have, if you want rural tiny homes, you're going to need to have some alternative waste systems, such as the composting toilets, gray water system, and things of that nature. I think you're going to find that tiny homes development, which we're talking about, which I continually go into, is going to be the future in many ways because you're going to be able to have a equivalency of a victory garden. And I don't know how many of you understand, but if, when times are tough, we have hard economic things, raising your own food to a certain degree is imperative. It's how people survive. That's the disadvantage of living in really large Danco projects in the middle of town somewhere. You don't have that ability. They do have community gardens, but when you're talking about tens of thousands of people. So I highly recommend that you consider this. You have a framework for this. I think you, basically there are A I. programs now that you have this that could totally update this thing anytime you wanted to. You enter in your new information, which you guys have in your staff, the A I. will go ahead and put out the report, then you guys could take in another 27 comments. I look forward to reading those comments. I will take the time, read that since the people took the time to send it in. And I appreciate you taking, what, four or five years to do this. Hopefully it won't be four or five years. This is the kind of thing, as things change here rather rapidly, you may wish to do every two or three years or something like that as far as, just an update. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Welcome again.
I have the hat on now. My name's Joy Ann McGary and I don't remember if I participated in this survey that was done about economic development for our county and things, but in watching some of it, and I missed some of it, and of course, I didn't read the 240-page document, and I might go back and, and take a look at it. Sometimes this information comes to me late in the game, and so I'm just going to comment here that I think the future is, small is beautiful, and the future is in looking at protecting our natural assets and in preparing for the future, whether it's a natural disaster or climate change-imposed realities. But I just really do think we need to be very altruistic in our view of economic development and not be, have people be selfish about, about things. I know it's kind of a general statement I'm making here, but... I know it's kind of a general statement I'm making here, but I just really do think that we need to take care of one another as opposed to taking care of each individual type of thing. So look at it in a broad swath of things. Healthcare, housing, small is beautiful. We don't need big, huge, honkin', high-rises in any way, shape, or form to, for any purpose. We need to maintain our rural culture. And I will look at that and maybe comment further at a later date, but thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board for comments and a motion.
I want to thank staff for the hard work in getting this done and all the community output and input. I think these processes are cyclical. They are getting better, I want to say, because I want to reference some of the efforts on this some years back, which were a bit clunkier than I would say this is. This is definitely, I mean, we're talking about humans and planning, so, and economics, which are, they're just not hardline in any one way or another, but I appreciate this effort. And ultimately, we have to do this in order to move these programs forward. So it's, if we don't do them, we won't, you don't plan, then you don't, then nothing happens, you know? So there's, a future requires some effort and some vision, and I think this does it for us, and I really appreciate it. So with that, I make a motion to file and receive this report.
Okay. There's Supervisor Madron. Can we get a second? One second. Thank you. Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and yeah, thank you to staff and our partners. Great presentation. I scanned the document. There's a lot of really great information in there, and I think you really nailed Humboldt. You know, we do have a lot of assets. Many of them are underutilized. You know, for instance, just very quickly, out in Hoopa, we have a modular plant that's state-of-the-art, was only built like 14 years ago, and we're trying to help Hoopa get their sawmill back up and running because right now they're hauling all their logs to Riddle, Oregon, right? We're not getting any value added to that raw log material. And here's this modular plant sitting there, ready to produce tiny homes. So I want to give a great shout-out to Franklin Richards, who not only is now working with the high school youth and others in Hoopa to teach them the trades, right? So there's the training opportunity there. They're building tiny homes, and it's just incredible when you can see these underutilized assets like that modular plant with, you know, this opportunity to train our youth and keep them involved in really productive things. So that's a great program going on out there in Hoopa, working with the tribes. We're all hoping to continue to expand that one. Another one is tourism. You know, we've got tourism, but I'll point out that, like in McKinneyville, it barely even taps the tourism industry. Here's this second or third-largest city, non-city, in Humboldt County, sitting right on Highway 101 with all of this money going by, and at the north end, there's a Vista Point out there on Highway 101. But you can't even get into the Vista Point if you're going north. And the last time you saw the ocean was the Golden Gate Bridge. And you come over that hill with that million-dollar view of Trinidad and the ocean, and you can't get off into the Vista Point. So we're working with the community and Caltrans and the county to ultimately be able to reconfigure all that so that whether you're going north or south, you can get into the Vista Point. And once you pull people off the highway, guess what? They want to spend the night. They want to plan a vacation next year for a week because McKinneyville, frankly, is centered right between the beaches, the redwoods, the rivers for rafting and everything else. And so, again, very underutilized assets. So, yeah, we can try and attract new industry. We can do all kinds of different things, but one of the biggest bang for our bucks is truly identifying our underutilized assets and figuring out how to bring them online. And in McKinneyville, with the airport development, airport business park, and the town center, which is going to be coming before this board for an ordinance here in a couple of months, is just an incredible example, I think, of how you bring all those things together and leverage outside money and bring that into the community. So I want to, again, congratulate you at staff and our partners there. Brett and Lindsay, thank you for your hard work, and we've got a lot of work to do. We've got to roll up our sleeves and really get out of all of this. So thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, thanks for this, you guys. A lot of this stuff we've all read before and just put in different terms, and I'm sure if we looked at probably 10 other places they've done this report for, that it's probably, a lot of it's the same thing that a lot of the communities. The biggest thing is, is California, and we have a real hard time of getting out of the way and letting anybody do anything. We want to control what everybody does with their projects, right down to the Nats rear end. And so if we get out of the way and let some of these people do some of this stuff, I mean, we've spent millions chasing a couple of things in the last few years and chased millions away, and we're at the same place we were. So I just, it was amazing to me, because I look at the report, that we've lost 4,000 people in three years. So we're getting more rural as we go, and part of the issue is we have to accept some of these industries that are basically low-impact. There isn't anything we're going to build that isn't going to have some impact on somebody. But I said this 13 years ago, I'd love the sign that says "Open for Business," but we're still not showing much. We have, you know, and we keep saying that, and this report says it over and over, that the timber industry is dying, it's dead, it's smaller and everything else. That's an industry that I just checked the other day. In the last six years, we've spent $225 million on infrastructure alone. We've built a new sawmill. We've built two new sawmills in the last five years. They are a little more automated, you're right. Things are, you know, and we have, we are growing something like 55, 60% more trees than we harvest, just like we're supposed to. So as this moves forward, you know, we have the fishing science that figured out is all the party boats in the Bay Area got limits by eight o'clock in the morning, and up here, we, you know, it was a pretty big whiff for us. So I guess there must be a sign, don't come up here to the fisher. Did the same thing up in Brookings and everywhere else. So if we don't get out of the way of people that have the money and that we want to fund everything so we can control it, we're going to be bigger deficits. We need the tax dollars. Private industry supplies the tax dollars. Government uses the tax dollars. We don't provide any. So hopefully, we can get that straightened out. I know everybody has their own personal, I just, it would be nice in the old days. I mean, when guys came out of high school, they had a job coming out of high school. I mean, these guys are struggling. And tourism is great, but after the top 10%, tourism doesn't pay living wage jobs. It pays for a lot of side jobs and everything else, but after the first 10% in most of those jobs, it is not a living wage job. So we're getting there. We're raising it quite a bit. It maxes eight bucks now, I heard.
Thanks for this report. I attended some of those SEDS meetings in Southern Humboldt and Fortuna, and it was dramatically different in both areas, and the concerns were dramatically different. I think throughout Humboldt County, we're very dissected by region, and what Southern Humboldt needs is a little different than what Arcata needs. That was very abundantly clear to me when I was attending the SEDS meetings. I think what Supervisor Bone says about, you know, I agree in some aspects that, you know, the timber industry is flourishing but not enough to sustain like it used to. And so there, today, if you're in the timber industry, you also have to do something else to sustain your family. And so it's not, it's not one entity any longer that's sustaining Humboldt County. It's many, many different entities, and if you can diversify yourself and really grasp onto what Humboldt County offers, then you can be successful, but it is very difficult to do that, and it's very difficult to pivot that much when you're trying to work. I wanted to say a comment about the 1, 2, 3, and 4 identified, you know, electricity, transportation, so forth and so on, on the chart. Those things are all recognizable that we need upgrades in Humboldt County. How to attain those is something that the SEDS, I think, we all know this. This is not new to us. We know that electricity is not something that, you know, all of Humboldt can get right now because of transmission lines. And so to identify them, yes, I understand that it needs to be identified in the SEDS, but solutions would be a little bit helpful as well. Like, we all up here advocate for PG&E or whoever to step up and fix their transmission lines or upgrade. It's been a two-to-three-year fight that hasn't resulted in a ton, a little bit of movement, the same with the phone lines. And so during the SEDS process, it would be great, yes, identifying the things, of course, but also paths forward that could be helpful for people that are attending these meetings to know you can reach out to whoever, you can do this. Advocacy is what you really need to do. So I just would love to include that in the process, and thanks for the report and look forward. So one thing, can you say from here, how long does the SEDS process go on? Does this wrap up one and we start another one? Can you explain a little bit?
Yeah, so this is the termination of the current process. The SEDS is good for five years. We have been talking internally about doing an update in conjunction with the local and regional workforce plan updates so that we're kind of in lockstep on any research or analysis that needs to be conducted there. So that one was recently published, so we're looking at about two years to revisit this document, make any necessary updates. As Lindsay commented, we can update this at any time, but there's not a lot of need to at this point. We did keep it intentionally broad so that really anyone going after funding can access those EDA files that are out there.
Yeah. I have to say I'm a little disappointed in 23 comments. That's a pretty low number. It would be great if people would participate, knowing what, really, that this is where you could put those comments and get those things addressed. And I don't know how to do that. We, by nature, seem to have low participation with things like this, but, you know, you would think 80,000 people, that we would get more than 23 comments, and it would be helpful if communities, chambers, et cetera, could have, you know, had a more robust comment campaign for us to help us with that process. But, you know, in the future, we can figure something out. And then Supervisor Arroyo had a comment, and thanks again, you guys.
I was primarily going to echo the appreciation for our staff and our consultants. I think, you know, I looked through this, and I don't think there was anything really dramatically different to me from other analyses of our region and opportunities, but it feels right. It really points to the things that we know about our community that are strengths and weaknesses and opportunities. So I would just say this is a really valuable source of data. It's both a vision document and a compliance document, and so it gets us to where we need to be to leverage, you know, other funding streams, and that's really phenomenal. I think, you know, just looking through this, I will refer back to it as far as some of the data and the way that it's presented is really digestible. I really appreciated that, and I think it'll serve our community and the organizations that are going to be looking to this, to pull information from as our partners in a really helpful way. So thanks, and, you know, I think it's a really well-presented document, and appreciate the work to make it, like, clear, and even though it's lengthy, it's, the sections within it are concise, so even though it had to cover a lot of ground, I find that, you know, it's really, there's not a lot of jargon, it's really digestible, and that was great.
Supervisor Wilson?
Thanks. Again, referencing sort of where we've come from and where we're going. I remember, and I can't remember what it was called, it was pre-SEDS, but it was one of the first sort of comprehensive economic analysis of Humboldt and sort of directional. It was kind of upsetting to a lot of folks because I think there was a, there was a story that we told ourselves that, a bit, that, you know, we're dominated by timber and fishing, and that's what we were all about, and there was an assumption that our economy was that. And then there was an analysis done that said, well, yeah, those are important, but if you really look at the broad spectrum and actually do the numbers, they're one of seven or things that are, you know, that are, it was healthcare and education and all the other things that were economic drivers. I think we've gotten past that. It was, you know, it was a shift that we had, a mind shift that we had to go through to get there, and it's part of, you know, really looking through the windshield when moving forward as opposed to trying to do economic development through the rear-view mirror. Nostalgia is not economic development. The future is what it will be and what we can make it based on what we've got and what we can leverage and, and again, and what we perceive as challenges in there and threats, too. So I just want to appreciate that we're, really are moving in the right direction, albeit not fast enough, and I appreciate Supervisor Bone's, you know, words around, you know, thinking about ways to make things work better, and I think there's an effort around that at all levels these days, and I appreciate you guys working on that. So that's all I got. Thanks.
Okay. Kaylee? Supervisor Bone?
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Chair Bushnell?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thanks. Thanks, Ryan and Peggy. Okay. Next, we are going to go to Planning and Building Department, and I think Director Ford, update on the Department of Cannabis Control grant recipients and Project Trellis grant recipients who owe Measure S taxes. Director Ford?
Thank you, Chair Bushnell, members of the Board of Supervisors. Good morning. John Ford with the Planning and Building Department, and I'm bringing you a report that basically was asked for back in March of 2025 when the board considered modifying the timeframe in which Measure S taxes could be repaid. And the board asked for a report to come back with how many people that had received Trellis grants and how many people had received DCC grants owed Measure S taxes. So this is what that report is intended to accomplish. So the first thing that we see is that there were a total of 275 DCC grants that were issued. Forty-four of those still owe Measure S taxes. I want to, I don't want to be drone on about this one because this is actually good news. Of those 275, 202 of those transitioned from having a provisional license at the state level to an annual license at the state level through this program. So that is an incredible message of success. There are also 58 Trellis awardees that owe Measure S taxes, and it breaks down a little bit more like this. So in terms of the grant recipients who are on a payment plan, there were 36 DCC water grants, 36 of those are water grants, 24 of those are energy grants. Some of those are combined, so there's a total of 40 awardees holding DCC grants that also owe Measure S taxes. In terms of the Trellis grants, there are 44 Trellis grantees that are on a payment plan. There, just for information, there are seven awardees that received Trellis grants, water grants, and energy grants that owe Measure S taxes. So some of those numbers are intertwined there, but the total amount owed there is over $900,000. Then there are recipients who are not on a payment plan, and there are four of those And there are four of those with water grant, one with an energy grant. So there's a total of four. There's 14 with Trellis grants that are not on a payment plan. And there's one who's a recipient of all three grants that are not on a payment plan. There's $136,577 that are owed in Measure S taxes in this group. And then there's other applications. These applications have been closed, revoked. They're in suspense, which is kind of an archaic term, which means that we stopped processing it for various reasons. Some have been withdrawn, one has been denied, and some are just in other pre-approved status. That, those are all mixed together, and there's about $322,000 that are owed in Measure S taxes there. So the bottom line is there's about $1.4 million owed in Measure S taxes of people who have received either a Trellis grant or a DCC grant. This is just a report to come back to you and give you this information. The recommendation would be to simply receive the report. We did not envision that there would be any action coming out of this. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from the board?
Madron has a question.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Director Ford, for that report. Very informative. You know, in life, there are often unintended consequences. And one of the things that's happened with this program was there were applicants who had submitted proposals primarily for energy or water or other efforts to meet the conditions of their permits, so that they had ultimately moved to an annual license. And they may have also owed Measure S taxes and/or fees. So as they were going along and they were trying to evaluate which of these bills to pay, because very few of them could pay all of their bills, given the $200 a pound, the crash of the industry, et cetera, et cetera. And so in doing that process, they made the assessment that it was really important to probably get their Measure S taxes paid, their fees paid, or their license could be suspended, and they could lose the opportunity to grow for that coming, growing season. Whereas the state conditions were, yeah, important to meet, but they had a little more breathing room, perhaps, to meet those conditions. So they went ahead and they paid their, and they were also Trellis applicants. And they were in many of the cases in the queue. Some of them as low as number 22, for instance, in the queue. But when they ended up paying all their Measure S taxes and their fees and were current on all that, applause, applause. I mean, doing the right thing there. They wrongly assumed, I guess, that they would still be funded for these, you know, solar, energy, water, storage, other conditions to be met that could be funded through Trellis and get assistance to do that. But then we, as a board, shifted our priorities away from that to having all of these grants go to those that had not paid their Measure S taxes. And so what we did was we left these people behind. We're now up in the 50s in the queue in terms of applicant priorities. We're funding those in the 50s, and there are those in the 20s and 30s that have now been bypassed because they paid their Measure S taxes. So I, as one board member, would like to revisit this and would like for the board to consider directing staff to take a close look at that and see what we can do about that, to level that playing field and really make it fair. I recognize as a county, for us, in many ways, it could be and was a high priority for us to say, let's put all that money to pay in Measure S, because then we get that in our budget. But in the process, I think we created a very unfair system for others in the queue who went ahead and paid all of the taxes. So we got that money, but now they're not able to get the funding for the conditions to meet that on their permits and other things. So I think you understand what I'm talking about, and I would like to recommend that we, as a board, consider directing staff to come back with some recommendations on how we can fix that oversight for many, many applicants. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question about directing staff. First of all, I had dug into, you know, I had some issues, some constituents in my district had some issues as well. And so I was able to reach out to Ryan and Peggy. And I think it's very specific. And so I'm wondering if, I don't want to waste staff time, and so I'm wondering, and maybe the CAO or Director Ford can help, if that's even possible to restructure, you know, I understand Supervisor Madron says we're bypassing people that are in the 20s, but why is that 20 person getting bypassed for number 50? And is it anything that could be fixed that would allow them to get funded? And I think CA Hayes or maybe Ryan, someone?
Yeah, Chair Bushnell, I think I can jump in here and feel free to add anything, Ryan or Director Ford, if you would like. We are already anticipating returning to your board with the Local Equity Plan Manual modifications that will reflect the prior changes made by your board. And in some post-haste conversations, it was identified that potentially there might be interest in adding in the planning and building fees into that, which I don't think was incredibly clear in that last directive. So I do think that would probably be the most opportune time for your board to give all direction of how you want Trellis to be established, and those modifications could be made at that time. In addition, I think staff could probably bring forward some data around who's in the queue, what their requests are, what number and placement they are, and things of that sort, so that your board can get a broad picture of exactly what demographics and what the requests look like from the Trellis applicants.
Thank you. I have one additional question, and this is for Supervisor, Supervisor, you want to move up here, John? Director Ford. So in your presentation, I think there was around a 200 number that are receiving or have received. How many of those are suspended or coming for revocations?
All of them that owe Measure S taxes are currently suspended. What, so?
So they're not cultivating and they're not utilizing their farms because they're suspended.
Correct.
And it goes back to the, I think Supervisor Wilson had made a comment a couple of years ago, to make sure that that money is getting utilized and is going to be put to productive use in the future and not just improvements on land that then the cultivation site will go away, because it is, you know, you have to have a cultivation license to get these things. So if you're suspended or revicated, what does that do to your funding grant?
We're working through that right now. I, we are having conversations with the permit holders to determine what their plans are. If they're, some of them have not installed the improvements yet, and the time to do so is rapidly, the end of this period is coming to a close. And so if they haven't done that, they really need to give that grant money back.
And I guess I'll just ask the big question in the room. Have you asked those folks, do they have that money still available to them?
In some cases, yes.
But not in all cases?
Not in all cases.
Okay. That's it for my questions. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Supervisor Wilson?
No question, but this is kind of going back to why I was suggesting that these be loans that are basically, you know, zero-interest, repaged loans upon performance that are tied to the property. So that, even if stuff gets installed and then the property is sold without a license, that at least the program recoups the value that then the property owner has just invested with public money to increase their value. I know that's not the intention. I don't believe people are trying to do that, but it's just, stuff happens, you know, things move on. And then also to protect against, I think, what Supervisor Bushnell is talking about, which is handing out checks and then with no guarantee of performance. And then where does that leave us? And what is that, you know, that's, it's not, it's not just on the applicant and the landowner, but it also reflects on our ability to manage, you know, funds with funding agencies in the future. And so I think we just got to think about the protections of our own institution and our ability to do that. But nonetheless, I mean, I'm sure you're figuring it out.
Say a couple of things. One, we asked about the loan concept with DCC. They didn't want it to be a loan. And so they kind of shot us down on that. Secondly, we are, when we're doing our annual inspections, we're inspecting for these sites that have the grants to see that things are installed, to see that things are there. So that's where those conversations are absolutely happening. And I did look at some of these that are on the agenda today, and I could not see that they had installed improvements. So it's likely that they're not there.
Thank you. Ryan, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments. One, on the current state of the queue. We did jump out of order a little bit for those individuals who are going to be having their permits revoked in March. So we did fund some of those individuals kind of out of order. The plan is to continue funding down the list in the queue, though. And right now, we are looking at getting to about number 50 in the queue. We are going to be moving forwards with reviewing applications and making sure that everyone's still eligible in July. I think that we could pretty easily identify what additional needs they may have in accordance with the old eligible uses of funds, so that we could revisit that. As you stated, we are going to be bringing back the LEP, so we need to clarify a couple of things in there. But there is opportunity for discussion of this, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board before I go to public comment? Okay, we'll go to public comment on the Zoom.
There is none. Chair Bushnell?
Public comment in the room. Hi, Kent.
Kent Swatzky, I think it may be time for you to partner up with Kyla Baxley in the District Attorney's Office. She's the head investigator. You have some people here, and you can look down your right-hand column, and you see suspensions and suspensions revoked, suspensions, and very large sums of money. These people actually have committed fraud. It's a criminal act. They've engaged, and they had an obligation to spend that money. So either it was a gifting of public funds, which you did, to them, and they ran off with it. I mean, if you go down here on, probably have access to this, I printed it out, the third page, second page on here, you have one person, $60,000 and $15,000. One's the 60s DC water, and Measure S is owed. That's been revoked. Another one down here near the bottom, eighths up from the bottom, has $30,000, $60,000, plus $10,845. That one wasn't even revoked, that was withdrawn. They voluntarily went away. These people have committed fraud. They should be prosecuted for it. Whatever the law can do, whatever you can seize, you're going to end up with a whole bunch of water tanks, apparently, and depending on its use. If it was used with chemicals, they don't have all that high a value unless you're going to use them for chemicals again. Otherwise, repurposing those, I think they're going on Craigslist for probably 50 cents, 30, 40 cents on the dollar. And that's on their ongoing. So we do have some value there. You need to lock it down, make sure they're not removing these tanks, because that's actually theft. And I really think that there's, you should actually be putting the hammer to these people in a criminal process. But I don't know whether the District Attorney has the staff or money available. I know they came in here before without staff and money. But I think your return on investment could be significant. And I think that that would be a very good job for our District Attorney to go after the people who have committed fraud with you folks. And it's kind of embarrassing when you give them the money and you allow them to do that to us. Apparently, there was no other way around it. But in the future, hopefully, we'll learn from that, and we won't engage in anything where you trust people, and then they take advantage of you. And should go to jail.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for further discussion and a motion.
This is just a report?
Yeah.
So what happens and what people's intentions are can be two very different things. And so I'll make a motion to receive and file this report, and thank you for that. I know Steve, or excuse me, Supervisor Madron, had recommended something that he wanted to come back to the board. It's already coming back, so then I don't have to worry about that. So I'll just stick with my motion to receive and file. Thank you.
Chair, a second.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify for Supervisor Madron that you heard CAO Hayes saying that this discussion item is already coming back, which were your discussion points? Did you hear that?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Chair. And yes, I appreciate what the CAO said, as well as Ryan Height's. I think that they're aware of this issue, and it sounds like they're going to be looking at how to try and solve a bunch of different problems when they come back. So thank you for that effort. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Kaylee?
Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Chair Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay. Thank you, Director Ford. We are going to take a five-minute break, and we A few of our final items. Just a little housekeeping. We will be going into closed session for a time set at noon. So if we don't finish up with these last three items, we will return after closed session. And so our first board initiative item is going to be brought to us by Supervisor Wilson, Letter of Opposition to California Assembly Bill 462. Excuse me, are we not done?
We've got another planning item on there.
We'll back up. I was wondering why you were sitting there.
[laughing]
Oh, is it number two?
Yes.
Ordinance amending title, that one?
Yes.
Okay. Director Ford?
Thank you, Chair Bushnell. Members of the Board of Supervisors, John Ford with Planning and Building, here to present an amendment to the county code, specifically Section 352, which deals with administrative civil penalties. This is part of the ordinance that code enforcement uses to process and enforce the county code. There's two
There's two separate sections that are used. One is 351, and that relates to issuance of notices to obate, and that's what gives the county the ability to have properties cleaned up. And then 352 really deals with notices violation, which can result in the implement or imposition of administrative civil penalties. And so that's what is being modified here, is that section. And the reason it's being done is really to reflect existing processes and also to more clearly state the county's intent in assessing penalties. So the modifications aren't huge, but they, some of them are fairly important. So one of them limits the amount of an assessment, and that amount would be half the market value of the property. Another one clearly states that a responsible party, which typically is the property owner, but may go beyond that, is not liable for the penalties of a prior property owner or a prior responsible party. But they would be, if they're the property owner, be responsible to correct violations. So they wouldn't be responsible for previous penalties, but they inherit the violation. And then just process for making sure that it's clear how notices are addressed, whether it be a notice of violation or a notice, a notice of violation or notice to abate, and that how those assessments are addressed, and that hearings for administrative civil penalties would be scheduled no sooner than 15 days, but no later than 60 days. So that there is a clock that starts when those notices are given, and that action is required within that 60 days, and that administrative penalties do not begin to accrue until 10 days after the violation is adjudicated. So that would mean anything, it could start when a property owner fails to respond to a notice, but it could also not start until it's gone to administrative hearing officer and been appealed to the court, and until all that process has gone through. So the penalties don't start accruing until after that process is completed. So the recommendation simply is to introduce the attached ordinance by title and waive the first reading, and we've given you the very long title, and nobody has to read the whole thing, fortunately. And then set the ordinance for adoption on July 8th, direct a clerk of the board to publish the required pre-adoption summary, and there's a lot more that goes along with that, but the clerk's extremely competent at taking care of all those legal requirements, and then direct the clerk of the board to publish the post-adoption summary. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Okay, we'll go out to public comment. Kaylee, anything on the Zoom?
No.
Okay, we'll go to public comment in the room.
Strongly support you moving forward with this. I'm not up to speed whether the litigation, outstanding, we're kind of in ham sandwich mode a little bit as far as litigation on this, maybe that's settled out. It's always wise to do a kind of a preemptive strike on this to satisfy what most likely would be required of you, should you get a court determination showing you're doing your due diligence. In some ways, it's a little bit of an admission, but on the other hand, I think correcting it is really important to do. This is going to be an ongoing situation, and to have, you have the legal basis to do what you're going to need to do on these topics, I think is imperative, so strongly support. I want to thank John for all the work, it's rather lengthy changes that went into this process.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment in the room? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for questions and a motion. Supervisor Wilson?
No question, other than sometimes we need to make amendments to our ordinances to reflect the reality of what the intention was. This is how it goes. We do it all the time. So I'm happy to make the motion. I will not read the entire thing, but I will say that this is an ordinance amending Title 3, Division 5, Chapter 2 of the Humboldt County Code, Section 352, and all the subsections therein listed in detail here. This is to introduce the ordinance by title, which we just did, waive the first reading, set the ordinance for adoption on July 8th, 2025, and direct the clerk of the board to publish the required pre-adoption summary of the ordinance and to post a certified copy of the full text of the proposed ordinance in the office of clerk of the board. Both the publication and posting be done at least five days prior to the board meeting at which the ordinance will be adopted, according to Government Code, Section 25124B1, and direct the clerk of the board within 15 days after adoption of ordinance to publish the post-adoption summary of the ordinance with the names of the supervisors, that's us, voting for and against the ordinance, and post in the office of the clerk of the board a certified copy of the full text adopted ordinance amendments, along with the names of those supervisors, voting for and against the ordinance, according to Government Code 25124B1. And that's my motion.
Supervisor Royal?
One second.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Supervisor Madrone?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Royal?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Sure.
Chair Bushnell?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Sorry for skipping over you. Okay, so then now we will go on to matters initiated by the board, and it's the first item, 25-820, is brought to us by Supervisor Wilson, and I'll let him introduce his concerns.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. All right, here we are. All right, so I am, and have been requested that we take a look at and have a letter in opposition to, unless amended, for what is Assembly Bill 462. And 462 is addressing accessory dwelling units in the coastal zone, and I want to first say that I agree with and support the intent of the bill, which is to build more ADUs in the coastal zone and address emergency situations. And so the concerns listed here or brought up have more to do with the implementation of it and sort of the framework around it. So just for sort of a broad understanding, we, as a county, enthusiastically and move forward with the request of the state by, from Senate Bill 9 and Senate Bill 35, to update and create accessory dwelling unit ordinances. I want to thank the, you know, Senator Weiner and others who pushed that in a strong way because, and I'll be real frank, local leadership across the state was having a hard time doing that. So the state said, listen, these are entitlements that we're going to be having, you know, figure out your details and get that done. And so we did that. All coastal counties and cities have, when we do our ordinances, our land use ordinances, because we have a coastal zone, that's what, you know, as per 1972 laws created by the people of California through an initiative process. Basically, we, when we do ordinances, our land, we have an upland land use ordinance, and we have a coastal land use ordinance, because they have different standards associated with them. So we did all the work to create our ordinances and policies around coastal and upland. There are a few differences. They aren't dramatically different than the other, but the things that we, that probably stand out the most for us as a rural county have more to do with protections around agricultural uses, have protections around streamside, and environmental issues around that, water quality, and archaeological concerns, and then also hazards. A lot of the, in the coastal zone, there's sea level rise and tsunami and these other policies that are embedded in that. 462, AB 462, is in, I think, a, I know it's in response to the fires that occurred in the Los Angeles, in Los Angeles County, whereby which, you know, in order to expedite housing stock, and especially in the affected areas, the governor had some proclamations around reducing or actually, you know, eliminating coastal development permit requirements in those spaces in the coastal zone, in the areas that were affected by the fire. This bill, what it does is it basically says that it would apply that same standard to all coastal jurisdictions by county, so within, they kind of do it within the county, but it would apply, at least according to the author, apply to the cities as well. If a declaration of disaster declarations made by the governor anywhere in the county, then this would apply in your coastal zone. So for example, if there's a fire in Orleans, and there's a declaration, you know, by the governor that there is a disaster there, it would then erase our ADU ordinances and basically our coastal government permit process for ADUs on the coast. So that would, basically, if you had a fire in Orleans, it wouldn't impact ADU, our ADU ordinances in Orleans to help people there. It would impact ADU ordinance, our ADU, CDP coastal development permits in Shelter Cove. I know, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense necessarily to those counties that are as large as ours, but the, that's how this is written. So that's one provision of this. That's the one that probably is the bit, the most, kind of the most problematic. The other is, which I think is completely reasonable, which is it allows folks to move in early, you know, before occupancy permit, to take occupancy early. So if they have an ADU that they're building on site where an emergency occurred, again, this is only, would only apply in the coastal zone. It wouldn't apply to people in Orleans or Wichita, but in the coastal zone, then they could, it's just disjuncted that way. So you could move in early. So the main kind of provisions that this letter sort of addresses are kind of three things, which is, I'll just kind of go through it real clear as best I can, is that, is that if there was an emergency declaration anywhere in the county, basically, we would not have our coastal development permit processes, which then do the agricultural protections that we have, and the main agricultural protection we have around accessory dwelling units in Humboldt County is that the accessory dwelling unit is supposed to be within the two-acre curtilage and of the main house. And the reason for that is so that people aren't creating accessory dwelling units that, like, say you have 40 acres, that's like one, that's like way off on one corner and one that's way off on the other, because that would impact the resources in terms of like fragmenting the, either the timber production or the habitat, or if it's farmland, the farm, you know, the ability to farm those areas. So trying to keep those, those accessory dwelling units, actually accessory to the house. The other, as I mentioned before, have to do with public safety around hazards, and then we have some water quality issues, you know, so that the accessory dwelling units require to maintain good water quality in terms of septic and those sorts of things, and also protect fish-bearing streams and those sorts of things. And then in places like Shelter Cove, we have protections around archaeological resources. Again, it would be, it just would be a little odd to, again, have a declaration of disaster somewhere far away inland and then remove those protections that we have already. Alternatively, we could just be speeding up and doing better job of doing more ADUs in the coastal zone, and there are ways that we could be doing that and promoting that. One is to shorten the timeline for the permits. Another is to, is to, you know, have the pre-designated designs and some other things that are listed in here, so that are, conceptually, we should really be doing more ADUs, not just in the coastal zone, but everywhere. And that's, again, sort of the discongruent part of this, which is where the disaster happens, why not just have the ADU exemptions that we're talking about apply within that area? And likewise, so that's what this is asking for, is basically, maybe that the suggestion would be that if the disaster is occurring in the coastal zone, that there's a 10-mile radius around that that would get these exemptions, something to that effect. So that's the summary of what I have here today. I think that the intention of the bill is good. I just think it doesn't apply to extremely large counties. We're, you know, we're about 4,000 square miles or something like that, 350, 3,500 square miles, and then in the next, I mean, there's like Mendocino's, you know, similarly sized, San Luis Obispo County similarly sized. So there are some other locations that would have, Monterey County, I think, is one of those, that are similarly large, would have this geographic disassociation, I guess you'd call it, with what the trigger would be to do this. And kind of in a long-term policy perspective, why would counties even engage in doing their, these coastal development permit processes that you have to go through per the law when they might be arbitrarily removed at any time on a permanent basis? Again, this has a, this has no timeframe to it, and another suggestion is here is like, maybe it's seven to 10 years in terms of like that exemption. So that's my case for making this to the state legislature, is to try and adapt it more for coastal communities versus having a trigger for this very far away. Again, 170 miles, three and a half hour drive, according, some people might do it in three, or even two and a half, if you're driving really fast. But Wichita or from Orleans to Shelter Cove is a long ways away, and so having this apply in that from one place to another seems a bit excessive. That's my pitch. Thanks.
Questions? Supervisor Bone?
I understand what you're saying, but I look back and I, is that right? The assembly passed it 77 to zero when it came in front of them? Am I reading that right on the vote? Yeah, that happens. That happens, and that's people that represent a lot of the counties you just recommended. And I said earlier, it's, we could promote housing. I understand if they, somebody, if there's a fire in Orleans, which there has been and will be, that somebody in Shelter Cove is going to go, good. But I don't know if somebody from Shelter Cove is going to go start the fire to make it so they can build their ADU. But I look at this as affecting the low-lying areas, but I look at, I look at King Salmon, in the last eight years, we've built five houses down there, ground up. So that's sea level rise impacted areas and stuff, and we're, they're going through a long process, a very, very elongated process, but they're making it happen. So what we're trying to do with the ADUs is, like you said, we need more ADUs, more ADUs, more ADUs. And I said earlier, I'm having a hard time voting for anything that gets in the way of something happening, because we'll sit up here and talk about housing all day long. We need housing. We got to have housing. Housing is one of the things, is, one of the main things that, you know, you'll hear from the medical, is there's no houses for, you know, mid-range and upper range houses coming available, and they're selling pretty quick when they do. So ADUs are a way for people to stay in their houses. I don't think people are going to jump on the emergency ordinance. There's an emergency, I can build my ADU now. I think they're probably going to start to process and go through it the way it is. I kind of like the way this is written. I've looked at all the people for and against it, and I don't, I'm not so sure, and I do have some coastal areas in my district, too, that I don't think, I'm not worried about an overburdened supply of ADUs being built because there's a fire in Wichita. And what I heard is there might, maybe, and there could. There's no certainty to any of this, unless there's certainty, let's, like I said earlier, let's get out of the way, and hopefully, we can make this move forward. You make a great argument, and I know- You make a great argument, and I know the 77 assemblymen that voted for it, it happens. They do vote for things that are wrong all the time, and that's why I appreciate having you. But I'm just saying, I can't, I can't vote against this, so I can't send this letter.
Any other comments before I go to public comment? Supervisor Arroyo.
So this is a lengthy letter, and this is a little bit more of a complicated one, and I understand, and I appreciate the explanation. So the recommendations are to essentially tie the coastal impacts to coastal provisions, right? And that is how we have permitted ADUs, and so that makes great sense to me. I, you know, I see the recommendations in here as not wholly throwing out all of the elements of this Assembly Bill, but making some recommendations about how to prevent unintended consequences. And, you know, I for one appreciate that, so I don't know if, I think, I don't know if folks have questions or discussion around this, or whether we sort of have our own perceptions about this already. But I am interested to know if there are any, if you have more to add about that element with the initial occupancy, or waiving the certificate of occupancy requirement? If there were, you know, disasters that took place in the coastal zone and this did apply? Any, you mentioned there were fewer concerns about that, and I was having a hard time pulling it out of the letter, so could you speak to that a little bit?
Sure. It's actually, I only reference it in the letter in that it's one of the two main provisions to be dealt with, but honestly, there's no issue with that. I think it should be statewide. I mean, why even apply that to just the coastal zone? I mean, we really should be, if we're talking about using, the idea is that a house burns down and there's some space to, or whatever, something, disaster happens, but I'll just use that as, you know, as an example. And there's some space to build an ADU, and that the owner wants to build that ADU first because it's small, maybe it's a, maybe it's a mobile home, maybe it's a, you know, small house or whatever, they can just bring in and just hook up, get the hookups and get it going, so that they can be there while they work on their, on their, on their main house. The idea is that even before, it's like, even before you can get it approved or get the occupancy permit for it, get someone in there so they can be in there while they're doing the work. That's the idea behind it. Again, I think it's a good idea. I support that. I don't think it should be just applied to the coastal zone. It should be applied, I think, statewide. I mean, why do it just in one narrow strip of land along the state? But, so that's why I didn't really address it in the letter too much, because I think it's, it's a positive, a net positive, that's why.
I will just note on that, since I asked you to elaborate, I just got an ADU permitted, not in county jurisdiction, but the final walkthrough revealed, before giving the certificate of occupancy, revealed a problem that needed to be addressed that was not insignificant. So I could see why, from a protecting people standpoint, waiting until that final certificate of occupancy has been granted would be important, just based on that, you know, a handful of one-off experiences. But that said, you know, I understand that this is about emergencies and responding to that, so I would be a little, I would be interested in hearing what Director Ford has to say about how this aligns with our, you know, our existing approach to planning and building. I think that'd be useful.
This bill on first blush seems like it's a really, really good idea. One of the things that I didn't catch initially was the fact that any declaration that affected any part of Humboldt County, could be Island Mountain, would then exempt ADUs in the coastal zone. So it's not just things that are in the coastal zone that are at issue. I think the other thing that's interesting is what this does is it exempts ADUs from a coastal development permit. And what, in the county, as Supervisor Wilson mentioned, we have a pretty robust accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and we have local coastal plans. And so even if we weren't processing a CDP for those, those items would still be getting implemented. The struggle comes when it gets down to areas that are in retained coastal commission jurisdiction, because there are no ordinances that are then applied to that area. It would be strictly up to issuance of a building permit. And so some of the resource issues that are identified would not be evaluated in the same way, because the county doesn't have jurisdiction there.
Right, but the CDP that was already developed is the, would, without this, would be the standard by which those, whether it's us or whether it's the commission staff, would still be the standard.
The CDPs, well, I think of the CDP as a process.
Yeah.
I think of the regulatory documents, whether it's the Coastal Act or the LCP and the zoning ordinance.
I meant the LCP, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So that is, that should be correct.
Yes, right. Which then we helped develop the LCP.
In Humboldt County, we did develop the LCP.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, so it's our local jurisdiction. I appreciate that. And one other thing is, I don't think the intent of this legislation is to limit it in the way that you just mentioned, right? It's, I think there is an understanding and a belief that the, that the local coastal permit is what drives the overall permit for the, for the ADU. And that may be true, maybe not for us, but it is, might be true for others.
I could comment on that?
Yeah.
That may be true in other counties, other jurisdictions. In this county, the process is, is even if it's just for a building permit, we're going to look at the zoning ordinance, we're going to look at the LCP policies that apply, we're going to implement those as part of the zoning, whether you process a coastal development permit or not. I appreciate that.
Supervisor Bone?
So, we're in good shape in our county either way we go, you're saying. So what we're doing is we're trying to change regulations for other counties too. Well, I think.
I mean, do we stay in our own lane, or do we want to just get in the way of everybody?
I don't want to get in the way of anybody. I mean, for the most part. But I think that part of, at this, at least at this juncture, what this bill raises is intent. And it sounds really good to clearly encourage housing in response to an emergency. I don't think anybody would argue against that. But to leave that completely open-ended and for something that occurs in Island Mountain to then grant exemptions for things that are going on in Trinidad, those don't connect for me. That's the way the bill's written, Supervisor Bone.
No, 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 I understand, Director Ford. I understand that 100%. I'm just saying, as I look at this, that we're, it's kind of like, you know, I go back to the ADUs and everything else, we have a robust ADU out there, and now we have people manufacturing and bringing in, towing in ADUs to put in, which I know has been a big part in everything else. So we're always going to get that. But you're talking about resource and everything else, but what we're talking about is the ADU is being built where, in conjunction, it still has to say somewhat where the original dwelling is, right? Or am I losing something completely?
So that's where it gets a little squirrely.
Yeah.
Because, so I'm going to stay up on the North Coast, in the Patrick's Point area. The area that is to the west of Patrick's Point Drive is all retained jurisdiction to the coastal commission. So technically, the county's LCP isn't certified for that location.
Okay.
So then normally that would be strictly a coastal commission action to issue a coastal development permit for anything to occur in there. And so those houses often are very strategically placed to protect resources. There's been no analysis to determine whether or not those sites can support an ADU and protect resources in accordance with the requirements that are in place at the time. And in that area, it's not so much our LCP, it's the Coastal Act. And I know this is very confusing, I'm sorry, but that's the nuance that exists here, is it really is trying to get at something that, through a very indirect route. If you want to exempt ADUs, just say we want to exempt ADUs.
So, okay, because I'm going back and reading everything I can on this last night and reading about the votes and everything else, and I noticed that all 77 assemblymen that voted for this with no nays are not all from, you know, inland counties, they're coastal counties. And why would they, why would they sacrifice the same thing that we're saying not to? It just, and I guess the great, the great answer would be, it happens, but I just, the intent, everybody likes the intent, but nobody likes the, I just don't know, are we getting in the, I don't see people jumping all over this. If there's a fire, we're in Island Mountain, we're at, we're in Wichita, we're in Orleans, and you think that's going to prompt somebody in Patrick's Point to build a 600 square foot ADU? That's going to override the resources of the county?
All I'm saying, Supervisor Bone, is that's what, that's what that allows. The first time I read it, I didn't get that out of it. It took me a few times through it to really see that there is a twist in there where they changed terminology in the midst of the bill, and suddenly you're not talking about the same thing you were up in the first part. And so, I mean, I was fooled by it.
Can I ask a couple clarifying questions? One with Mike and one of you, John. First of all, the timeframe for the emergency, is the application window open from declaration of emergency till end of emergency? Do you know?
It's from declaration of emergency to forever.
So then if, say, the road slides out and they get, we get a declaration of emergency, then forever we are exempt in the coastal for ADUs? Forever?
So we'll need one emergency, we need one emergency and then it's open game forever?
Yep.
Only in the coastal?
And only in the coastal zone, not having anything to do with the area that had the emergency.
I mean, I don't, that part doesn't bother me, because if my house burns down in Island Mountain and I have property in Shelter Cove, I can see the logistics, I need to build an ADU over there. So that, you know, you guys can't make that connection, I can, because a lot of people have coastal properties and inland properties, and if there's a declaration, their house burns down, and maybe it's not suitable to rebuild there, they want to go over to the coast and rebuild, I can make that connection. So that doesn't bother me. The open-endedness on the emergency does bother me. But Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. I think this is kind of a can of worms, so I can also make that connection and think about, you know, how people might want to relocate to the coast, especially if they've experienced wildfire impacts or, you know, but this could, this could apply to any number of disasters, and I'm thinking about areas where we currently, and, you know, where people currently cannot build because of constraints that we've already established, like Fairhaven. There are sewer limitations, there's, you know, a moratorium on building right now until there's improved infrastructure. You know, I don't want in a disaster for there to be the sort of open-ended opportunity to build an up to 1,200 square foot structure in that area. I don't know if there's anything else in place that would prevent that, but how I'm reading this, I don't think so. When I think about Big Lagoon, or, you know, off Old Arketa Road, where we have issues with, you know, flooding from, you know, from the creeks, and, you know, I think there's a number of areas, you know, off Indianola where we've, you know, we know there are archaeological resources. There's a lot of things that are part of the, our process of evaluating, you know, coastal development permits that are, that are suspended by this from what I'm reading here. And I would urge folks to think about those as important elements. I do agree that we should make it more possible for people to find housing after a disaster and in a suitable climate that they want to be in, you know, but I am concerned about the sort of Pandora's Box that this opens. I don't know if in all those instances I just gave, this would waive all of that in perpetuity, but if that were the case, I would be very concerned about that, because there's really good reasons why we're not having people build in those areas right now. And there's a lot of people who want to and are waiting for the opportunity when that opportunity should present itself. And I don't think all of them are just going to willy-nilly, you know, ignore the reasons why they haven't been able to build and just kind of use this in, but a handful of, you know, folks will, and I think it'll present some problems. So I don't know if you have any thoughts about those examples particularly, but those seem like the ones that come to mind when I think about coastal areas where we don't currently, where it's currently quite difficult or impossible to build an ADU.
So we're going to go out to public comment, but I did want to ask one other thing. So with this exemption, would they still have to, you know, there's still, is there still no criteria? I mean, what if it's in a wetland zone? What if it's, there is no sewer, so forth and so?
So that's where, in Humboldt County, I'm anticipating the question was for me, but in Humboldt County, we do have all those regulations that are in place that exist, except in retained jurisdiction. The LCP is questionable about whether it applies there, because the coastal commission doesn't take that as a primary policy document for their decision-making. So I think the thing that I am concerned about is there's an argument that all those things, because you're, and we don't implement the Coastal Act, that gets done through a CDP, that it'd be difficult to have those things reviewed. Within our LCP areas, I'm not concerned about it.
If I can, you're not concerned about it in this moment, but I don't think that was the intent of this legislation, which then can be amended later to deal with that. I mean, it's quite precedent-setting, and I think if you look at the, if you look at the analysis of the, the author's analysis, and you look at the language, that's, the intent isn't what you're talking about necessarily.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Tried to read black and white.
Yeah, I understand. And so we have to speak also to the intent of the legislation, because again, there's a precedent-setting element to this. It's not just what this, we have right in front of us, is what direction are we going in? And I think, again, the disassociation of the, of the, of these things is something that we have to think about. And also, I don't think that, and, you know, stated in the letter, I don't think that the authors really took into account sort of the rural application of this. There, I think there's some assumptions around, you know, services and, you know, environmental impacts or not, and they don't mention archaeological impacts, they certainly are not considering cultural and tribal resources in their analysis at all. And so I think, again, you know, that's why I brought this up with concern, and I apologize for jumping.
That's okay. We're going to go out to public comment. Any public comment on the Zoom?
There's none, Chair.
Any public comment in the room?
By definition, I don't think, can you put an ADU on when you have no other house? I thought it was a, you had to have a house to have an ADU. But I think, I think what I understand is, my biggest concern is people really aren't addressing the major problem here. When things burn down there, there were a whole bunch of places there that When things burn down there, there were a whole bunch of places there that shouldn't have been there for many reasons. And I guess, I guess they need to have some RRR like we had with the weed thing, where you can take your entitlements, and there actually is something, Mark Lovelace had something, where you could take entitlements and transfer them to a more appropriate place. And that's, that's in my opinion what they should actually be doing, to, to enable those people to go to, make exceptions, to get them to a, not a perfect place, but a better place, because they don't belong where they're at. But the rest of this, I, I find it interesting thing, but I don't, anyway, I, I do worry about the environment. I worry about such projects as when, for social justice, you can put a gigantic hotel out in Trinidad where nobody else could have it anywhere else in California. I do worry about the, the humans not understanding that there are certain places where they really don't belong, it's not safe for them, they're going to continually have floods, they're going to continually burn and these things. Anyway, it's a completely bigger can of worms than we're addressing today, so.
Thank you. I guess that's it for public comment. He hasn't raised his hand. So can ADUs, John, be built where there's no structures? Interesting question.
At that point, it's the primary dwelling unit. I think the thing the bill does is allows a primary structure and an ADU to receive building permits at the same time. Normally, the principal structure would need to be occupied first, the bill would allow the ADU to be occupied and receive final first.
That's interesting, because if there's not a primary there, then it would take care of a lot of the concerns of the building where it's not supposed to happen.
Maybe. Every, every case is, is going to be a little bit different.
Sure, but if you're, if you, and, you know, accessory dwelling unit is an accessory to your primary.
Right.
And so if there's not a primary there?
Right, it is only for the second unit, we're only talking about the second unit. And in the case of this bill, it's, the first part of it is only talking about where there, and I think it's anticipated, and this is where I got a little bit sidetracked, I think, is that it was anticipated that there was damage to that property. And so there was an allowance to rebuild the primary and the ADU, since oftentimes ADUs are far smaller, can be built faster, allow the occupancy of that to be granted first.
Yeah, and I see that as the context of probably where it came from. It's not unimaginable to me that I have a family member living in Bloxburg, and I have a house in Shelter Cove, and they burn up, and I want to build an ADU for them to come and be able to have a space. So, I mean, it's far-fetched, I guess, but it is, you know, rurally, it happens a lot. And so it, it's feasible to me that I would want to build or be allowed, in a case of a disaster, to have a home created quickly for a family member. Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, just clarification. So this provision that talks about being able to move in early only applies in the coastal zone, and only applies if the property has had damage. And so the primary residence used, still has an entitlement, and even under emergency provisions of both the Coastal Act and the state, it's basically, you still have entitlement to the square footage of the existing home under whatever that is, that, that already exists. So this is just an additional entitlement only to a place where, so, yeah, even though the home may not exist, the entitlement exists. So it doesn't apply to a blank piece of property where there's no home, it only applies to that. And I do think, I will say that, you know, the very specific idea that someone has a property on the coast and a property, you know, an hour and a half inland, and then, you know, that's, I, I don't think that's what this is talking about, like, specific property owners that own multiple properties. This is talking about blanket changes to the entire coastal zone permitting rip all, so I.
Does somebody, does somebody want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve this letter and send it to the, to legislature. I would ask that, let's just do a little bit of formatting on it to make it a little prettier.
Okay. Supervisor Bone? Anybody want a second? I'll second. Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I'm, the clarification is, is the ADU goes where a structure's already been, or basically. Okay, so most of the impacts of archaeological, streamside, almost all of that stuff has already probably been addressed, because there's already a unit there, this isn't an argument with us, I'm just saying it. So most of that's been addressed. And as we move this forward, what we're trying to do is, prior to 1976, we wouldn't even be having this discussion. So, and you're going to have a lot of units that were the Coastal Act. So a lot of this, it doesn't matter how many houses, it doesn't matter who, I don't think, right now we're allowing ADUs, John, how many ADUs do we have built and, or permitted in Humboldt now?
I cannot give you a specific number on that. I can say that.
More than 100?
Well, we've been approving about 40 a year for the last three to four years.
Okay. So I don't see, what it is, is you've got to have a willing person that wants to have somebody living by them. There's a whole bunch of things here, and I don't think anybody's waiting for a disaster. I don't think we're going to see this if we have a disaster, we don't, I think we're going to jump to 90 on that. I, I, so I've still got about, no, you talk about, and you made some good points on how limited the things you want to change. Did you talk to the author at all about this?
Yes, I did speak to the author's staff about this.
And was he willing to change anything?
Not at the time, no. It was a while back. But I want to respond to the 1976, it wasn't until 2017 that we principally permitted these agricultural lands and resource lands, that, that part of our ordinance tries to protect, to residential, principally permitted for residential, which would mean if we didn't do that, we wouldn't, the ADU law wouldn't even apply to it as it currently exists. And again, the rural application of this, when you say that there's been the impacts for the main residence, if you have a five, 10, 20, 30, 40 acre site, our current ADU law requires that the ADU be, you're right, associated with that main residence. If that's removed by this ordinance, or by this change, then that ADU could go anywhere on that site, and those protections, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have any understanding of the protections of those spaces. So with that, I'm closing out.
Supervisor Madron, do you have any comments before we go to vote?
No comments.
Thank you. Do you want to, Supervisor Arroyo?
I, I do just want to make sure I'm clear, and this question is for Director Ford. So when I think about, so, so I, my understanding from this is that the primary dwelling doesn't have to have been damaged in the emergency, this would, and, and I can, I can fully understand how in, in some instances you would want to have a secondary structure for a family member, or for yourself, or for whatever reason. But would it allow for, say, you know, a 2,400 square foot residence in Fairhaven to then build a 1,200 square foot ADU, or in Manila, or in Big Lagoon, or in West Haven? Would that entitlement then be, or not, I guess I shouldn't call it an entitlement, but would that, would the, the requirements around our current process be waived by this in perpetuity in those areas if a disaster was declared? Is that your understanding?
Supervisor Wilson and I have a difference of understanding on this point.
Okay.
But I believe that the, the thing that is waived is the requirement for a coastal development permit. So even if there's no coastal development permit, in our case in Humboldt County, in those areas that you identified, we would still apply our zoning ordinance, our LCP, and apply the standards within those as part of the building permit issuance. There would just be no coastal development permit. I, I hope that subtlety makes sense.
But isn't the coastal development permit cover all of those wastewater access, water supply, all of those issues that currently constrain development in most of those places that I just mentioned?
They do, but, so let's talk about wastewater first.
Sure.
Is the first thing that would be done for a building permit, is that we would send it out for referral to the various departments. One of those very important departments is Department of Environmental Health.
Okay.
So they would evaluate, ask for studies to demonstrate whether or not the septic, the wastewater is feasible at that location. So that would still get evaluated. The coastal development permit would, in that process, would report on those findings, whether or not it's feasible. And the value of the coastal development permit really is that that's, needs to be done in a public setting, in a public process, so there's more transparency there. In this particular case, it would be a staff-level decision, and then it would be implemented through the issuance of the building permit.
But I take it that you said, since there's a difference of perspective on this, that you think that this is much broader?
I don't think that, that Director Ford is, is wrong in what he's saying. What I'm saying is that I don't think that's the intent of the, of the legislation. And I think we have to take seriously the intent of the legislation, because while what he's saying may be technically true, a landowner may differ from that and take us to court because of the intent of the legislation. And we have to be careful of that, and also, this can be amended in the future. So again, it's like, what's the precedent and what's the direction that we're going matter in the, in, in these, in these discussions? I mean, I don't think it's, you can't just be like, oh, that's the end of it, we're just, that's, it gets up to the line and maybe doesn't cross it. I think part of the question you add, asked too, is like, I think was, if there's damage in a property in one part of the coast, does that mean there's a, there's an entitlement that's transferable? I wasn't quite sure, but as far as I can tell, it doesn't have to be transferable, it's just all ubiquitous. Oh, although I will say that the ADU provision in here that allows for the, for you to create, or to move in early, I guess you'd say, only applies to the property that's damaged, it doesn't apply to another property. I think that's clear, okay.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, Kaylee?
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
No.
Supervisor Bushnell?
No.
Motion carries 3-2.
Okay, I'm going to refer to, we have a time set at noon, and I don't think we have enough time to start the next item, so we will take a four-minute break and come back to the dais, at least three of us please, at noon to read in closed session. It's time set for noon, and we're going to go to County Council.
Thank you, Chair Bushnell. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9D1, in order to discuss existing litigation in the matter of the Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission Project Number 77-285. It is also the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9D4, in order to discuss the initiation of litigation in one potential case.
Thank you.
In the Eel River, it's going to be a long one, it sounds like. I, I generally have come to not support dams, the only dam I'm supporting at this time is, hopefully Supervisor Steve Madron will help us put in the Blue Lake Lake back in, and it was dammed by a beaver, and so if a beaver puts a dam in, it's great. I know they probably, to satisfy their water needs down south, need to expand their reservoir system. They should do that, or they should desalinate, or they should do something else. But whatever you can do to push back on them continuing to take the water out of our Eel River Valley, it's great. I did, you know, I did, you did have support for the two-basin solution from a bunch of nonprofit-for-profit people that were looking toward lining their pockets with certain projects going on there, and I wish they would all just basically stay with the, what I consider the golden one there, and hang out for, keep all the water in the river. Thank you, my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. We will reconvene in Conference Room A at 12:15. How long do you anticipate?
I would say an hour and 15 minutes to an hour and 45 minutes.
Okay, so a couple hours, we'll be back here. So Supervisors, if you could be in Conference Room A at 12:15. We're in recess. Okay, we are back at a closed session, and we'll go to County Council for a report out.
Thank you, Chair Bushnell. There was no reportable action taken with regard to items G2 and G3.
Thank you, and we have two more items left on the agenda today, and they are both, both board initiative, so the next one is a letter of opposition unless amended to Assembly Bill AB 518, bringing, being brought to us by Supervisor Wilson.
Thanks. Here we go. One thing after another here. All right. All right, so this is Assembly Bill 581, it's a, I think it's an important, 518, excuse me, 518, thank you. It's important, I think it, conceptually, I think it's, there's an, it's, it's addressing what I think is probably a need, similar to the last one, but I think there's some issues with it that, that we might want to see addressed, and so I'll, I'll talk about those here right now. So AB 518 is a bill that specifically is trying to expand or allow for more camping on private property, more, more specifically, and there's a need for that. There is a need to have those types of recreational activities in, in our county and in the state. That's, that's a real, it's a real need. And I think it addresses some of the desires for.
I'm sorry, I need to interrupt. Supervisor Madron, you have to turn your camera on, please. Thank you so much.
All right.
Okay, go ahead.
Great, so. Anyway, so, so what I'm getting at is that there, I think it's trying to, it's, it's going in a way, in a direction I think is, is, there's, there's, there's a need that it's trying to fill. Essentially, what it's doing is, there is some issues around folks who would like to provide some of those services on their properties, but there's, are state laws that require a lot of things to do that. They require water and wastewater treatment systems, and they require paving and ADA, and they require all of these things to have these types of commercial activities, either on residential, or agricultural, or, or. types of commercial activities, either on residential or agricultural or natural resource-based lands. And this tries to find a space in between these sort of more, bigger and established campgrounds and something that maybe someone might have at their house. Some might be servicing or being serviced through a platform, you know, online platform called HipCamp or some others. And they are the sponsor of this bill by, you know, whatever that's worth. And so that's what this is doing. So I want to be really clear. Like, we have discussed this at this board a bit when we did our short-term rental ordinance, that this would be coming up to us in, you know, at some time in the near future. And by near, maybe within a year or so. We asked staff to start taking a look at that, and I talked to Director Ford, and he has definitely had staff starting to put something together. And so we, I think we might see something within a year to do that. This is, this is opposed unless amended, and here's some of the issues that probably are in that letter. So we do recognize that there, you know, you got, if you're doing this, you gotta be balanced about it. You gotta have, you gotta account for neighbor and land use conflicts. You have to account for environmental protections, and you have to deal with public safety. And so right now, we don't have an ordinance that addresses this. And so, but we do have people engaged in it, and like when we had our short-term rental ordinance before that, those activities currently are not compliant with our land use code, and yet they're still being advertised on these platforms. And so it's hard for people to know whether the activities are legal or in conformance to the, you know, local code codes and regulations. I think I've received a few, well, I don't know, I've received a few, I talked to a few folks and received some feedback. A lot of this is around the assumption of folks have mostly around here, is like, hey, I'd like to have one of these on my farm, or maybe two. By one of these, I mean, one or two campsites on the farm. This ordinance, or not this ordinance, this bill kind of is a bit broader than that. But well, I want to talk about some of the main, the issues around this. So the main issue, I think, is a jurisdictional one, in that sort of the criticism that we're hearing, or that I've heard a lot about, and I do concur with, is that because these are online platforms, it's really hard to tell where they're coming from, because the online platforms don't dictate, or don't have the information. They don't have the address and those sorts of things. So it's hard for jurisdictions to know whether they're in their jurisdiction or out of their jurisdiction. And so, so different counties, and even within cities within counties, may adopt different standards. And so the online platforms don't show the address. They don't, they don't allow for jurisdictions to know what's going on. And in some cases, you could have cross-jurisdictional impacts, water quality impacts, emergency response impacts in terms of those issues, and then, you know, wildfire and other things. There's the other issue around agricultural fragmentation and habitat impacts. So this bill would allow for up to nine sites as its maximum. So that's their, that's what they're considering small. And that would be maybe on a, or that would be like on a 10-acre or larger parcel. And if you can imagine a 10-acre agricultural parcel with nine evenly distributed, say, yurts for camping, you would basically, it's not, it's not, it's not an agricultural use anymore. It's now been converted to somewhat of a, like a campground or hotel use. It's basically, it's a, it's a, it's a commercial conversion of our ag parcels. Likewise, we manage our landscapes in our, in our broader natural resource TPZ and other places for not just the timber and not just grazing, but we also manage them for wildlife. And likewise, you could really have some pretty significant fragmentation impacts in terms of use on those landscapes in a broader scale. So that's a concern that this bill doesn't necessarily address. And the viability of those. So you could be having more conflicts in terms of the uses and those sorts of things. Public safety risks. So we are a big rural county. A lot of, we have large areas of our land that are high fire risk areas. You can, and so in areas that are hard to get to and manage in terms of public safety, or hard to get away from. The site itself has, you can, if you go on it, you can see that many of the locations have, you know, advertised to have fire rings and those sorts of things. And there's not really any, you know, in control with, in relation to that. And even if you try to control in your own jurisdiction, your neighboring jurisdiction may not through this, through this bill. So there's some, some issues around that. And then there's just like the cost of knowing where these places are, where they aren't. And again, they're not, it's not, it's not on the websites. And so that's, that's part of, that's one of the bigger issues. Again, it's cost benefit. We currently are receiving TOT from various locations that advertise on these platforms. And we did as well for short-term rentals before. But one of the issues, again, is cost benefit analysis. Again, I want to get to this requirement on this bill, which says it has to have 24-hour phone contact. It doesn't require onsite management. And by phone contact, that means that someone, you could be able to call someone, I guess, from that, from that site. But that person could be not in that jurisdiction. They could be in another state. They could be in another country. And so that is, that's a, that's a pretty, I think neighbors in this community would want to know, like, wait a minute, like, really? Like, that, does that seem reasonable? And again, if we, if we do that, it doesn't mean necessarily that Del Norte, Mendocino, Trinity County might not do that, and we could be impacted. Again, we don't know because of the fuzziness of the, of the data. I want to emphasize that both RCRC and CSAC supported the first version of this bill originally when it was through, and it was with, McGuire ran it, but are not in support in, at this time. And they're trying to negotiate at this moment, and I can go through some of the items that they're trying to negotiate for that transparency. So they don't support this bill currently. Yes?
They don't support, like, they came out no, or they're just neutral based?
I'm saying don't support. So you could say neutral?
They're, they're not, they haven't indoors, but they haven't said no.
Right, they're not in support.
They're neutral.
Okay. I do know that they have some concerns, and I can list those for you. They're very specific. So they're, right, sure. So anyways, this is why I think we should assist in the oppose, with an oppose and amend. It's, again, the issues are the need for onsite hosting and safety standards, especially in areas that have our high fire zones. I think that this is really, doesn't really address this. Again, the ag land protection element of this, I think, is pretty important. I think farmers should have a way and a pathway to have agro-tourism be what, be a part of their, of their mix of how they're able to generate income. I think that's absolutely 100% important. But, but the, the, in, the fact that this doesn't have any way to cluster or maintain or have actual ag, prime ag soil protection, or even use protection specifically, makes this, you know, you could really see conversion. What happens when you convert, somebody, is we have a lot of farmers that rent, you know, 10 and 20 acres for their farms. They rent them. If a, if a landowner says, well, you know, it's gonna be, I'm gonna make more money with five or 10, or, you know, five to nine yurts, or whatever it is, then we will lose that production. And so it is a concern. And so that, those are kind of the main issues around, and the main concerns that are highlighted in this, in this letter of opposition unless amended. And happy to have the conversation about that and see where it goes. Thanks.
Okay. Any comment from the board? Okay, seeing none, I'll go to public comment. Anybody on Zoom?
Yes. Caller 3116, I will unmute you, and you will have three minutes.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Shannon Hughes. I am a resident of Willow Creek. I'm also the president of the Willow Creek Chamber of Commerce. Our organization has a heavy focus on increasing tourism to our region. You know, we know Humboldt County is a destination for tourists, and tourism should be celebrated. I think we all agree with that, and be embraced as an economic driver. Humboldt County also has a lot of diverse regions, and it's what makes Humboldt so special, but can also result in differing needs and priorities between the regions. So, you know, coastal tourism looks very different than it does in Willow Creek and other rural areas. We are at a deficit of campgrounds in our area. We only actually have one fully functioning national forest campground in this entire area, and we don't have a healthy, robust campground system like state parks do on the coast. I would suggest that the board does not oppose AB 518 and not get in the way of progress for rural communities. Willow Creek is not in need of any tourism mitigation. At this point, we're trying to promote tourism. If there are regions that are experiencing the need for tourism mitigation, or have land use issues, then that can be addressed in those regions. We are surrounded by national forests, and in national forests, it, first of all, it spans multiple jurisdictions. Anyone can camp for up to two weeks without phone contact or some via onsite. So I would wonder why we would be restricting private residents from engaging in offering a similar experience for visitors. Also, from my experience, any campground that has more than four sites needs a business license. That has gone through the tax collector, and then the planning department signs off on that. So I'm not really sure what the issue is with lack of oversight on that, because it seems like that has been working. They also pay into TOT. So anyway, the state's trying to remove a barrier to tourism, and the Board of Supervisors in, of all places, Humboldt County, should support AB 518 and embrace the needs in our rural communities. And so I just really urge this board to not oppose it. And in fact, I would urge you to support AB 518, as this is really moving in the right direction for areas of this county that are in the more rural setting. So that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Caller 8496, I will unmute you, and you will have three minutes.
Hi, this is Laura Lassiter with the Southern Humboldt Business and Visitor Bureau, and I would like to speak in support of AB 518. Humboldt County's rural charm and diversity are a big part of what draws visitors here, and that should be celebrated and not overlooked. AB 518 recognizes that there's no one-size-fissile solution when it comes to land use. This bill would make it easier and more affordable for local landowners to offer just a few campsites, helping those who are working to responsibly diversify their income during these challenging times. Right now, small landowners have to follow the same expensive rules meant for big RV parks, like putting in floodlights, paving roads, even if they just want to host a few tents in a field. AB 518 fixes that. Local governments would still have full control. This bill just removes the extra layer of state rules for landowners who already have received the green light locally. Humboldt County, in Humboldt County, we should be helping locals create simple, safe, low-impact ways to earn extra income, not making it harder. Please support AB 518 and speak up for rural landowners. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all on Zoom.
Okay. Public comment in the room? Seeing none, I'll close public comment on this item and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I, I heard all the scary stuff. I heard, you know, the fires and floods and earthquakes. But I also understand the TOT tax. And it was so funny, I got a call yesterday from a lady who was instrumental on us getting our VRBO or whatever from Burndale nine years ago, eight, nine years ago. We went to John Bartholomew. She was talking to her sister at a place. Well, she called me yesterday, and she was writing a check. And she's, Rex, I just thought you should know. Because she had a year and a half's worth of TOT tax she'd held for us, but we didn't go, we didn't go back. She actually paid more in TOT tax this year than she paid in property tax. That's success. It was something she wasn't doing before anything else. I think, given this opportunity, now, I'm trying to figure out this, this land, this agricultural land, I may tell you, we tend to, you know, we gave 60 acres away on the south of Eureka there for that water restoration thing. There was ag land for 80 years, 85 years. Picking and choosing where we pick our ag. And I guess, I don't think anybody's gonna take a prime piece of ag and put campers, nine campers, and cut out one of our small farmers that's renting 10 acres. I don't, it could happen. It could, I mean, anything could happen. I've seen stranger things happen, yes. But again, this is one of those bills that passed the third reading in the assembly 63 to nothing. And I always wondered, how did we get so much smarter than all those people? So I think, given the opportunity of people, because the opportunity here is maybe for a farmer that has fallen on hard times and can't pay his measure S taxes, maybe he can put somebody to camp on his, for 40 bucks a night. Or, God, they're getting 60, 80 some places. There's, there is such a level of restrictions on this, about some of the things you said. I mean, there's like 28 things that they have to meet by. I just, I just think any way we can open the tourism dollar up and maybe get somebody besides the hotel owner, maybe reap a little bit of the benefits and stuff like that. I'm having a hard time saying no to anything that can make an individual in Humboldt County make money right now, if the impacts are just maybe are gonna cause and everything else. So I, again, I won't be voting. This sounds like it works, and it looks like there's been a lot of time and effort into this. And I know we've all talked to HipCamp, we've all talked to everything else. But I'm pretty amazed how many people call me and says, hey, I'd be interested in this. And I think we just heard from two chambers, or two chamber-type organizations on both ends of the counties, that are probably suffering as hard as anybody in the county because of regulations and stuff that have happened to them and market things. I think we better listen to them, too. I know, I can understand your district, you know, you don't want it, you know, maybe in some parts that. But I can see where this would be helpful for some, for some of these people. So I'm gonna have to not vote for this, just because I want to vote for the people of Humboldt.
Thank you. I also am not going to be supporting this letter. We talked about earlier with the SEDS conversation, how people have to diversify their, their lands and their opportunities at making income. This, in the rural Southern Humboldt area, especially in the Dunsborough area, gives some opportunity to folks out there that, Mike, I've heard you say a million times, what are people gonna do with 40 acres now? And how are they gonna sustain themselves? Well, here you go. Here's a path forward that maybe they could be able to do that. I've also heard you say, what are you gonna do with 40 acres? You really can't farm on it. You can't log it. It doesn't sustain itself without cultivation of cannabis, which was the draw, you know, 10 years ago with that 40 acres, is that you could cultivate on that, live a lifestyle that you wanted away out in the communities, and be able to sustain. So this, this is gonna open an opportunity for folks, and hopefully they'll be able to make up some monies where they've lost and be able to make their mortgages. And so I won't be supporting this opposition letter today. Anybody else from the board? Supervisor Arroyo?
Yeah, I mean, my understanding is the Planning and Building Department is working hard on bringing something forward for us to address a lot of these concerns. But this is sort of an additional layer that makes it a little unclear to me whether, I guess I'm struggling with whether our authority to impose additional requirements, should we choose to, and our ordinance is superseded by- we choose to, and our ordinance is superseded by this, or if it's just this and then ours on top. That was one thing I was going to ask Director Ford if he was here. But, you know, when it comes to the hosting, when it comes to the number of sites, I mean, I will just say, you know, for, this is silent on the notification of neighbors. I imagine that people would want to know if there are going to be nine campsites occupied for a total of 14 consecutive nights. And they're, you know, depending on the conditions, some people might really take issue with that and others might be fine with it, depending on exactly, you know, how they share road, how they, you know, what the conditions are. But it is, yeah, I don't know, Mike, if you know about the answer to that question. But, you know, I think there are some valid concerns about this as proposed. And I don't, I heard you say loud and clear, and I will say loud and clear, that I want there to be an ordinance for this and I want to allow it. I'm not opposed to people having privately operated low-impact campgrounds. I do want to make sure that there is adequate response to the concerns that camping might bring. And I think that's a very valid thing to be concerned about as a county, given the, you know, the, exactly what the charm is, is the, you know, rural kind of unspoiled feeling that you're able to escape and you're far from, you know, the hustle and bustle of everyday life. That is also what creates conditions for, you know, potential hazards. And, you know, I think it's different to create a concentrated group of camp sites for people who may not have experience camping than it is, for example, for people to go into the backcountry and get a backcountry permit and do, you know, those are apples and oranges. So I do think, you know, we have to be aware of just what the concerns might be for neighboring property owners and for fire response and for just responding to medical emergencies, things like that. I think it's, it's good to make a path forward that addresses those concerns that people can utilize. So I'd love to hear what your understanding is of our authority in addition to this, Mike.
Sure. So this is an opt-in thing. So like I was saying, we could create our own path to do this. And we should, and I think that's, and I'm in favor, I'm in favor of what the vision of what the callers were talking about, which is creating a path by which people can do this. That's not something that I have an argument with. Part of this is, and again, one of the bigger issues is around the jurisdictional elements of this and sort of the requirements. If the sponsor for a bill is trying to move this forward, which I think, you know, which has customers in our county, they called those customers yesterday and let them know about this. And I think that that's a reasonable thing to do. The bill should probably, I think, and I think I agree with, again, RCRC and CSAC on the notification requirements that it should have. And the reason I put forward oppose unless amended is basically so that your amendments that you propose are taken seriously. It's not that you, you know, ubiquitously oppose something and saying, listen, make some amendments to this and hear what we have to say to make it better. And then we can talk about making those, you know, changing the position away from that. So what those organizations, and again, these are local government organizations, are asking is things like requiring a property owner to list the authorizing county or jurisdiction on any listing and locally required license and permanent registration. Just having that listing as part of the, of part of what's being put out there in terms of the information would be very helpful. Require online hosting platform to include the authorizing county in the listing to provide a means for an operator, including relevant licensing information, cross between, you know, those sorts of things. Would require an online hosting platform to remove a listing within seven days if the county contacts that platform and informs them that the listing is invalid or revoked or expired. So putting some onus on the platform itself to be responsive to the county or the jurisdiction that's doing this. So part of what happens in these online formats is that, and something that we had an issue with, with the online formats for the short-term rentals is they're not, you know, before they just, you do, you wouldn't know where they were, what they were doing, and then all of a sudden, there were issues were coming up. And so this allows for those concerns to be addressed. But I will say that the, and I hear what, I hear, I think there's a very valid response in terms of like, hey, you know, we have these places where you can camp in our national forests and they are set up for camping. But there is, there is a responsible party for that, right? And that's, and that responsible party generally is, is around to a certain extent. I mean, obviously, there's a ranger station nearby or there's some, there's some formality to it. This doesn't really require that necessarily. Again, it just says that someone's available by phone from somewhere. And I think, you know, we want to not just be safe, we want to have, as you mentioned, good neighbor policy on that. And again, it's cross-jurisdictional. So if, if we don't, you know, if we aren't being supportive of some, you know, ways in which the, you know, Trinity County or Mendocino County or some of our others, even city jurisdictions have, you know, boundaries upon which these health and safety issues aren't addressed, then we're going to be dealing with them in some, you know, in some other ways. I completely agree that there is a need for us to do this and we have given staff direction to do so. I'm just concerned, what happens when we, when these bills come up and we don't, you know, push to make them better in the way we want to make them better and this is how you do it, it's basically oppose until amended, then you're not, we're just not going to see the changes that we might want to see. So that's what I'm saying. I agree with the overall intent of this bill up to a certain point. One of those, again, is around, and Supervisor Bone mentioned, like, will someone do nine yurts on a 10-acre parcel and convert prime ag? I think, you know, when you talk about glamping these days and how much you can make per night, per site, I would say there could be a pretty strong financial, you know, shift in terms of the, in terms of the, or, you know, why someone would want to do that, a motivation to make those changes, you know, can get higher and higher, especially as the prices go higher. So it's just something we need to be conscious of. I think with some, with some boundaries around that, like I said, clustering within those agricultural and resource lands or whatever it is, so we aren't getting fragmentation, some of those things, that would be very helpful, not just for us but for other jurisdictions. And so that's my pitch. That's what I'm making. Thanks.
Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, just, you reiterated, somebody has a chance to make more and more money off their property. It's the whole idea. Sometimes it's, we're seeing right now, a piece of property sold out, I won't say where, but sold for $1.9 million three years ago, just sold for $265,000. So if this person had a chance to make some more, maybe he could have kept the property, maybe not. We're seeing, we're seeing people having to shift. And 40 acres of it was agriculture. Now nothing's being grown on it. So I'm wondering if, on our land use, if, and am I wrong on this, we can be more restrictive. We can add to this on our own, on our own county basis. We just can't be less restrictive than the state, right? I'm looking at county council. I know you have all the answers, but...
Are you asking whether or not we can put additional restrictions?
Yes.
I think it would depend on the restrictions themselves and it would be a somewhat case-by-case basis. But there is leeway for the county to, to address these issues as well. However, state law does preempt local law.
Yes. But we can make things more restrictive than, we just can't make it less restrictive. We heard this a lot during cannabis. So, so we can change things as we want. That's I'm just, I'm, I'm having, yeah, I'm still there.
Supervisor Madron, do you have anything to add? And I'm also looking for a motion.
Nothing to add.
Okay. Mike, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I'll just make a motion to approve this letter for opposition unless amended. I do encourage everyone to reach out to the, to the author and the folks to see if there's ways that we can improve this bill. And I'm happy to, if that happens, to bring this back for support. Thank you.
Is there a second?
No second.
Okay. Kaylee?
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
No.
Supervisor Madron?
No.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes. If it's all right, I'd like to make an alternative motion.
Can we finish voting, please?
Oh, we didn't finish?
No.
Chair Bushnell?
Yeah, excuse me, no.
Through the chair, if I can ask counsel.
Motion does not carry 2 to 3. Thank you.
That's fine.
Supervisor Wilson, go ahead.
Thanks. Through the, through the, through counsel. Ken, I'd like to make an alternative motion to just send a letter of concern relating some of these issues to the author without, without amending the, without, you know, making it an oppose.
Yes, you can make that motion.
Okay. I'm going to make the motion that we send a letter that's modified. It's not an opposition letter, but a letter of concern, listing the concerns that we have with the bill without being in opposition to the bill.
So clarification, is there a second?
So just modifying it to not say oppose, but say a letter of concern?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. Let's just go ahead and vote. Kaylee?
Supervisor Madron? I can't hear you.
He said no.
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 Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Chair Bushnell?
No.
Supervisor Bone?
No.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Sure.
Motion does not carry 2 to 3.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to move on to another, go ahead.
We need an affirmative motion of some sort. So I think it would probably be something to the effect of...
You got a no vote on both, on both items. It dies.
But we need to confirm then that no letter will be sent. We need, we need a positive motion.
I'll make a motion that we do not send a letter, that we stay neutral based.
Second.
And I would, knowing that two of the authors, actually three of them, you have relation, pretty strong relationships with them, seems to me you should be able to walk this through, right, of the authors, sponsors.
Yeah, we'll have continued conversations for sure.
Yeah, okay.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
An oxymoron, yes to the no, yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
No.
Supervisor, is there a Bushnell?
Yes.
Motion carries 4 to 1.
Okay. So we're going to go to our last item of the day, which is also a board-initiated item brought to us by Supervisor Arroyo, Letter of Opposition to California Assembly Bill 306. I'm going to hand it over to Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you. This one is about suspension of the building code as of January 1, 2025 for many years into the future. And it would be frozen until 2031. And it, the letter, I think, is pretty to the point, but it undercuts our ability to address and implement aspects of our climate action plan. And so the oppose unless amended suggests that excluding existing buildings allows for modernized retrofits, you know, maintains that local authority will be in place through at least March of 2026 to allow for adoption of the 2025 building code, which is going to have some changes that are climate-related. And also just continues to underscore our ability to implement our climate action plan. And that this also, the other provision was, you know, that we can allow local code updates to streamline projects and aim to fulfill our housing production goals. So we can have other approaches that we use to achieve that goal, but without suspending the implementation of the building code.
Okay. I will go out to public comment on this item. Anything on Zoom?
No. Chair Bushnell?
Any public comment in the room? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to board. Any comments from the board? Supervisor Wilson?
I support this mainly because we're trying to move forward with our climate action plan. And listed as ways to address those things as we move forward are code changes. And so this bill would be in conflict with the mandate from the state, for us anyway and for many others, in terms of reaching and getting through our SECA process for our, our climate action plan. And so it would kind of leave us and many other jurisdictions hanging in, in relation to that. So, so for that reason, I, and a couple others, but I think we really do need to be moving forward with more resilience and energy efficiency and those things that help us protect ourselves from wildfire and two-level rise and all those other things. And while helping future homeowners and businesses, and I guess this was really only residential, so homeowners, you know, have more efficient and healthier homes to live in.
Okay.
Does somebody? Can I add just a comment that Director Ford made to us about this was that, you know, from his perspective, there wasn't a benefit to the bill and that it doesn't help in our efforts towards the climate action plan implementation. I know he's not here to say that, but he shared that with, with me, so.
Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion? Or Supervisor Bone, you want discussion?
No, I just, I'm having a great time reading this. This passed the Assembly 171 to nothing. So I'm just, who knew we were so smart up here? The problem is, is it's six years to put things on hold. There's already stuff in the way or on hold. This, the estimate on the increase of what it will cost a house to be built goes up dramatically and it goes up even more as we change each code, each, we're getting in the way again. And what I'm saying is, is I'm a guy, if I go out and build another house, I'm scared to death to make it all electrical because I don't know how I'm going to pay my electric bill every month now. And there's no stopping it. Give me an option to run it. Well, we can't do that. We can't have a generator. I mean, give me options. I'm just saying, the option is out there and people, it's their house. And I understand, we're making great strides and we've already hit our levels according to climate change and stuff like that, our levels. And we're, and we're doing really well on that. But then we're also going to do something where, you know, we can't buy, the electric vehicle standards aren't going to be met, we have so many standards aren't going to be met. But we're going to put housing so far out of reach that we're always going to have people saying, we need more housing. We're going to have housing folks forever because they're all going to be saying, we need more housing. We're not going to build any more housing, but we're going to have a lot of people saying, we need more housing. So I, I said earlier today, four hours ago, three hours ago, let's get the hell out of the way. I mean, there's so many restrictions in place already. Do we need to really throw more restrictions in there? And I'm tired of them. I guess it's because I'm old, I'm honorary, and I don't see anything getting done. I mean, I look at 30-year housing subdivisions of 327 homes turn into 178 multi-unit housing units, which should have made everybody happy, but then we had to argue about bike lockers. And then we go right around the corner putting people in apartment buildings and then we argue about somebody that wants to put in 300 mini storages on a lot that's been empty for 85 years so they could put their paddleboard. The things we put in our garages that most apartment dwellers can't do, our paddleboards, bicycles, all our accessory fun stuff. So I, again, won't be voting for this because I think... So I, again, won't be voting for this because I think we need to get the hell out of the way and let some things happen.
Okay. Does someone want to make a motion? Or Supervisor Madron, do you have any comment?
No comments.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve, but I, just for the record, and related to the, to the storage unit item that came before us, we actually expanded entitlements. So we didn't take away any entitlements for someone to build a storage unit. We just gave them the choice and more building entitlements to build apartments if they so chose to.
Is there a second?
No second.
Kaylee?
Supervisor Bone? Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
No.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Chair Bushnell?
No.
Motion does not carry two, three.
I'll make a motion that we do not send a letter of opposition.
One moment, I'm putting that in.
Yep. Right?
Oh, yeah, I'll second.
No.
Oh, yes.
Rex, sorry to second you. So odd to have to do that when you say no, and then you have to redo that. Just for the record. And then I feel like. Otherwise, we don't have an action item to report on. I feel like I'm being tricked into saying some.
Make me decide so loudly under the mic.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
No.
Chair Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
No.
Motion carries three, two.
Okay, thank you. We are adjourned for this meeting, and we will be back next Tuesday.